Yeah, all good?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, everything's good for me.
I was gonna wear my rainbow hat.
Yeah? If you hear me echo, just make sure your mic is muted and the volume is too loud. And not press anything with that on.
Oh, there we go.
Joe?
Yes?
Can you please add Stan Ferington to the panelists list? He's an attendee right now. Thank you.
I think it's fine. It's warm in here.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Are you okay carrying the?
I guess I'm normally because I thought you're gonna have the... Whatever you decide.
Just give me a blanket.
I brought a big blanket and started. Miley, it's Stevens here. It's Heather. Oh, I turned it off. Because I can't figure out how to open. I'm not good at it. Stevens? Well, I don't know. I can't take my jacket. I can't carry it. I can't carry it because it's sloppy. But if you want it open, I'm just gonna do it like. So we should be starting. Okay. Is everyone able to hear clearly? Yep? Other folks, Sarah, you're good?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Good evening. Tonight is Monday, December 14th, and I am calling this board meeting to order. Orange County Schools Board of Education pledges to our families, students, staff, and the greater community to conduct our business in a courteous and productive manner, showing respect for fellow board members, staff, and citizens. The board asks its citizens to conduct themselves with the same courtesy towards all staff members and each other. As per board's board policy, ramors rules of order will be used to conduct meetings, and a moment of silence will be observed before we begin our business. Public comment will be held after the board adopts tonight's agenda. As we come together tonight in our hybrid meeting, may we remember that we educate our students on the traditional land of the Okinawa Band of this community nation? May we remember the students and teachers who were lost at Sandy Hook Elementary School on this day eight years ago? May we remember that we're all here to serve the students of Orange County. In this district, we fight for our kids to be fed, clothed, nurtured, loved, and educated. May we remember that our students grow up and change the world. Like Dr. Ken Mitya Corbett, an Orange High School graduate, has been instrumental in the development of modern COVID vaccine. May we remember the sacrifices our teachers and staff members made in every year, but especially this year, in your students' week. May we remember that the words spoken in this meeting have power in this district, and may we use this time for repairing trust, honoring hard work, and showing respect and appreciation for the fact that we're each trying our level best in our individual roles as we navigate an uncertain path ahead. As we begin our moment of silence, may we allow our common goals and shared love and concern for our students and community to honor the center of the work ahead this evening? Thank you for that, everyone. Dr. Felder, do we have any recognition this evening?
Thank you, Chair McKenzie. We most certainly do. When Orange County Schools decided to create supervised learning labs to support some of our most at-risk students and families for free, our local United Methodist Church offered their facility to partner with Orange County Schools until our campus locations became available. On September 21st, Pleasant Green United Methodist Church provided a beautiful backdrop for our students as they received support with their virtual learning. The Pleasant Green United Methodist Church remained open through December 4th as we transitioned to providing supervised learning labs at three of our schools. At this time, we would like to express our sincerest appreciation for the volunteers from Pleasant Green, for the use of their facility, and we have the pastor, Laura Robertson, on the call. Their support during the first stages of our pandemic response is greatly appreciated, and we look forward to future opportunities to partner with them. Thank you to Pleasant Green United Methodist.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Yes. All right. And so we also want to recognize a group of our equity leaders. So next slide, please. And so Michael Fulen, an educational researcher, once said, "An organization cannot flourish, at least not for long, on the actions of the top leader alone." Schools and districts need many leaders at many levels. Orange County Schools is very fortunate to have leaders at many levels. One set of leaders we have are our equity leaders, also known as equity warriors. At last month's board meeting, we recognized Mr. Jeffrey Faulkner, science teacher at CW Stanford Middle School, who is an equity leader and warrior. Tonight, we want to recognize our student equity leaders and warriors. So what is an equity warrior? An equity warrior is someone who is driven by personal values and beliefs and are passionate about and contribute freely to equity work beyond their assigned role. They are also willing to grow and to learn, to become more effective in advancing the equity agenda in their school, the district, or community. So at this time, I'm going to turn things over to Dr. Deana Keeling, Chief Equity Officer, to introduce this month's student equity warrior leaders. Dr. Keeling. And I just want to point out before she takes the floor that the picture that you're looking at did not occur during the pandemic. This is a pre-COVID-19 photo. Just wanted to make that clear. Dr. Keeling.
Thank you, Dr. Felder. And I'm gonna ask if you would please go to the previous slide because I think the whole team... Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Qualitative data such as test scores tell us where inequities exist. But equity leaders know that if you want to know why the inequity exists and how to address it, you have to listen to the voices and stories of those closest to the inequity: accountability, access, culturally relevant curriculum, representation, and safe inclusive environments. This is the Orange High School Student Equity Team's framework for creating equitable student outcomes. From holding roundtable conversations with Orange High School staff about how to address racial and other inequities in the school, to recruiting students of color to take a chance in higher-level courses, and emphasizing to staff the importance of making students of color feel capable and welcome in those advanced courses, to researching and calling on Orange County School leadership to create a policy that addresses racial harassment. By their own admission, the Student Equity Team at OHS is persistent, and this persistence is paying off. This spring, an African-American history course is being offered at Orange High School with Latinx history and Indigenous study courses to follow next year. The team has positioned themselves to be equity change agents, both in their school and across the district. They describe their team as a place of unity, collaboration, and upliftment that provides a platform and safe space for students of color and other student groups that have been pushed to the margins to voice their concerns. I wanted to end with a quote from the students to sum up why the team was chosen as this month's equity warriors, but I couldn't because everything they said in their interview was relevant and impactful. And that is exactly why the OHS Student Equity Team is this month's equity warriors. I encourage everyone to read the hashtag #EquityWarrior piece on the Orange High School Student Equity Team on our website and social media sites. And if you know an equity warrior, please email me so they too can be recognized. Thank you, and back to you, Dr. Felder.
Thank you so much, Dr. Keeling. Thank you, Orange High School Equity Team. We are grateful for you. Does the board have any comments before we move on? Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda? I have a motion from Mr. Atherton and a second from Ms. Howler. Even though the board is present in the boardroom, we're still gonna do a by-role call since we are hybrid. So Ms. Doyle, yes. Ms. Howler, yes. I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Miley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens? I think that's a yes. And Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
We have adopted tonight's agenda. Now is the time for public comments. After each speaker has been recognized and unmuted, they will have three minutes to speak. The board will not have a discussion with any speaker. No pernane or vulgar language will be permitted, or personal abuse against any person. Public comments should not address any specific confidential or confidential student or personnel matter. Complaints concerning any specific employee or student are not permissible during public comments. Ms. Stowe, will you please recognize our first speaker and indicate when interpretation services will be needed?
Good evening, Madam Chair. There are no interpretation services needed. The first speaker is Holly Hopson. And her comments are in reference to Agenda Item H.
Thank you.
Ms. Hopson, you are unmuted.
Hi, good eve... Oh, I think it just went unmuted. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, board members. And Dr. Felder, thank you so much. I just have a very quick comment. I wanted to speak again to the decision to bring teachers black back to the classroom at this point, especially in the midst of rising COVID numbers, and in particular, the decision to bring teachers to teach from an empty classroom. You know, I think that there's anything that we've all learned from the horrible nightmare that we are all living through is that, you know, we're all able to rise to the occasion and find ways to get things done creatively, remotely, in the best possible and the safest way possible, until we're all able to come together safely again. You know, I think a fundamental that I know I think about a lot is, you know, those who can work from home should in order to protect those who cannot work from home. You know, it's been frustrating over the past week for my child who's already really struggling with remote learning and, you know, to deal with slower internet connections, teacher drop-off, you know, glitchiness, you know, worse than typical because of our own highly-competed-for internet connection. Because of this requirement to expect all of our teachers to be in schools teaching students at home from empty classrooms, and I just want to make sure that I've raised my concern. I get it that there are some teachers who may want to return to the classroom, certainly some teachers that may need to return to the classroom, especially if hybrid learning proceeds as planned. You know, I know that we're all taking this one day at a time, but I think we have many teachers who do not want to and should not be reporting to the classroom. That is a strategy that can mitigate risk for those teachers and administrators who want to or have to be in the classroom due to the nature of their job. I'm sure that some of you have other jobs and workplaces in addition to your service here, and, you know, I know that you would want the same consideration from your employer. For me, I'm working from home because I can find a way to do my job from home in order to protect the employees and coworkers and colleagues that I work with who don't have that option. So my purpose in speaking today was to just respectfully ask the board and management to reconsider the policy, allow schools, teachers, principals to make the best possible decision for each classroom and each teacher, to try to minimize risk to all and try to maximize the learning capabilities and the learning for our kids in this really tough situation. So that was all I wanted to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Hopson. We appreciate your comments. Ms. Stowe, will you please recognize our next speaker?
The next speaker, Megan Darab, is also speaking in regards to Agenda Item H.
Thank you.
Hello, this is Megan Darab. Thank you, Board of Education, for this moment to speak. I'd like to begin by thanking all of our Orange County School teachers who are working very long hours with their own family stress and anxiety on our content-rich assignments, video development, grading, and much more for our students. While I was not in agreement with the September decision to have the remote-only teachers return to the building in November, I was pleased to see that decision changed and the return date moved to last Monday. Those thoughts and decisions, though, were during a time when the COVID numbers looked much better in Orange County. Today, the News and Observer reported a percent positive rate of 11% in North Carolina, more than double the state goal of 5%. With this difference in COVID statistics, I would like to see the board discuss the current direction to have remote-only teachers in the building. Some students are thriving during remote instruction, some are struggling, and I understand that one solution is not going to work for every Orange County family. I'm asking that our remote teachers are allowed to have a choice of where they can best teach in their virtual classrooms, as well as best collaborate with their team. I also have the fear that Orange County Schools will begin to see a shortage of teaching staff due to contact quarantines, similar to what other school districts have seen. By allowing remote-only teachers the option to stay at home, that could possibly protect that group of teachers from being affected by mandatory quarantine. That's all I had to say this evening. Thank you for your time and for your service to the Orange County Schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Darab. We appreciate your comments and your perspective. If you want to say just, in the interest of public information, I got a report from the Quinton of Stewart today that percent positive in Orange County is 4% right now. So we will discuss that later in the meeting, but I just wanted to highlight that before we move on to our next speaker.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McKenzie.
Of course. Thank you, Megan.
The next speaker is Caitlin Stubblefield, and she is also speaking in regards to Agenda Item H.
You're welcome, Ms. Stubblefield.
Good evening, Orange County School stakeholders. My name is Caitlin Stubblefield, an OCS alum and current employee. I'd like to share a letter that reflects the voices of many at New Hope Elementary School. We address you tonight to ask for the following: consideration of a staggered reentry schedule for staff, defined and clearly communicated metrics to evaluate the safety of Plan B, and the inclusion of staff voices in matters that impact teaching and learning. Friday's Virtual Town Hall gave us a lot to consider. According to Dr. Benjamin, the controlled space of a school is safer than other places in the greater community. While we understand the logic behind this, we struggle to see how schools are safer places to do our jobs than our homes. Some staff are being asked to teach virtually from the building 34 instructional days before their students return to campus. Staff should be granted the opportunity to teach virtually from home up until two weeks before their students return. The district has chosen a staggered return for students and can grant that staff the same opportunity. Furthermore, the district has implemented a policy where staff who travel out of state over winter break should quarantine for 14 days and produce a negative COVID test before returning to work in the building. If there is flexibility for this, why can't there be flexibility for a planned staggered return? Bringing staff into the building incrementally will lessen risk of potential spread among our self-contained EC classes, pre-K classes, EC resource students, and staff. An additional takeaway from Friday's Virtual Town Hall is that OCS is planning to use a wait-and-see approach to COVID-19 in our schools. The four metric areas that were being monitored to track trends in Orange County are being pushed aside to make way for the transition to Plan B. A district Plan B document states that no one metric should close a classroom, school, or the district, including shifting back from Plan B to Plan C. So we ask, what will? We want and deserve to feel informed and supported in this transition, knowing that people are making decisions that prioritize health and safety for ourselves, for our families, for our students, and for our community. Finally, we ask for a voice. While surveys capture quantitative data and provide a space for comments, there is no substitute for an ongoing and open line of communication between district leaders and OCS staff. We encourage the board and superintendent to create and sustain a staff advisory committee that meets with the board regularly. This committee would be made up of certified and classified staff from each school who reflect a diverse set of perspectives. We believe that this committee would be mutually beneficial. This committee should meet regularly with the district leaders in order to build a relationship that prioritizes consistent two-way communication, not just when difficult decisions need to be made. In conclusion, we ask that you consider a staggered reentry schedule for staff, define and clearly communicate metrics to evaluate the safety of Plan B, and implement a staff advisory committee that regularly meets with the board to ensure that OCS prioritizes being the first choice for families and the first choice for staff. Respectfully, Caitlin Stubblefield, Andrea Perrone, Elizabeth Harrington, Tracy Reddig, Stephanie Bordeaux, Allison Mann, Rebecca Solard Patel, Estefany Soto, Ashley Kimball, Christine Bryant, Tammy Kepley, Yandri Sarai, Donna Bahena Bustos, Abigail Aldred, Emily Odlet, Brenna Leonard, Lily Herman, Holly Wallace, Sarah Jones, Bethany Turner, Rachel Steele, Arianna Tenlow. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Stubblefield. Ms. Stowe, will you please recognize our next speaker?
The next speaker is Colin O'Hagerty, and the item agenda is Agenda Item I.
Thank you. Welcome, Colin.
Good evening, board members. My name is Colin O'Hagerty, and I am a junior at Orange High as well as a member of the Orange High School Equity Team. I am here to discuss my avid support for the proposed gender sport guidelines. Thank you all for giving me the time to speak. I'm so grateful for your hard work in creating these guidelines that support LGBTQ students, and my heart is warmed with the amount of positive community support this policy has received. It is vital that we pass this policy in order to protect students in the LGBTQ community, specifically transgender students. Schools should be a place of welcoming and acceptance, and I hope that these guidelines will bring us towards a future where students can feel welcome regardless of their identity. As a gay student who has witnessed harassment of gay and trans students in our schools firsthand, I am truly saddened that this policy is even necessary in the first place, and that human decency isn't just common sense. However, I hope this policy can be passed in order to protect students from harassment and purposeful misgendering in an effort to create a more accepting school environment. In a 2018 survey by the Human Rights Campaign, they found that 77% of LGBTQ students had felt depressed or down in the past week, and only 26% said they felt safe at school. On top of that, only 5% of students surveyed felt that each of their teachers respected their sexual orientation or gender identity. These stats help to prove the point that an exclusive environment can lead to increased rates of depression and contribute to the societal conditions that cause increased suicide rates among LGBTQ youth. By instituting this policy, I hope that OCS can begin to educate students on how to treat others with respect regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, and that teachers will begin understanding the importance of acceptance and enforcing inclusive policies in their classrooms. I can't even begin to count the amount of times that they called slur in the hallways or other school environments. I can't even begin to count the amount of times I've heard trans students be purposely misgendered or harassed due to their gender expression. With this policy, I hope we can end any student-led discrimination and lack of action by teachers, fostering a more accepting future. While many teachers are advocates in our schools, it is vital that each and every student is reached with these messages of acceptance. This can't be done without every single teacher being on board. In the same survey, 67% of LGBTQ students reported hearing anti-LGBTQ remarks at home. Many LGBTQ students feel unsafe at home and fear ridicule if they come out. It is vital that this policy is passed or provide school support for students who are not out at home, and that this policy protects these students from being outed without their consent. Safety comes first, and if teachers or staff members out students to their parents, the safety of the student may be in jeopardy. Therefore, this policy must be passed if this is prevented. Only together through policies like these can we, as a school community, begin to foster a more equitable, safe, and accepting environment for LGBTQ students like me. Through this policy, LGBTQ students will see an improved school environment and will be able to turn to school staff members like counselors to discuss their identity without fear of retaliation or being outed. It is vital that this policy is passed, and our LGBTQ students are told that they belong in Orange County Schools. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak.
Thank you so much, Colin, for speaking so candidly with us this evening and elevating the reason why we have this policy before us tonight. Thank you again. Ms. Stowe, will you please recognize our next speaker?
Yes, the final speaker is Kevin Reese, who is also commenting on Agenda Item I.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Reese.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. Dr. Felder, I'm speaking both as a parent and a teacher. So on Friday, North Carolina counted a record 7,500 new cases of COVID. On that same day, Orange County Schools held a virtual town hall, the ostensible purpose of which was to inform staff and to address their concerns. All but 15 minutes of the allotted hour was taken up with presentations by the Orange County Board of Public Health and the ABC Collaborative. As such, there was little time for staff questions, and the chat through which the staff were to be able to pose questions in real time was malfunctioning. We have been told repeatedly that the leadership of Orange County Schools is aiming to be responsive to the unfolding situation the pandemic represents. At the town hall, however, a narrative emerged that contradicts that promise. Both the Board of Public Health and the ABC Collaborative emphasized repeatedly that the only relevant metric is transmission inside school buildings. The representative of the ABC Collaborative stated that schools are charged to remain open to students and staff regardless of the wider situation, with examples of gun violence, earthquakes, and pandemic. By the end of December, according to the representative of the ABC Collaborative, every county in North Carolina will have moved up a level. The yellow counties will be orange, the orange counties red, the red counties still more red. What could happen in the coming weeks that will change the minds of our leaders regarding the gradual return of students and staff in the buildings? By their admission, nothing. Nothing can occur in the wider Orange County community that would allow teachers to resume teaching from the relative safety of their homes. No worsening of the pandemic will stop the return of students to school buildings next semester. We'll measure the rate of in-school transmission once we're all back in the buildings together and respond accordingly. Until then, the minds of our leaders are closed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. That concludes our public comments for tonight. Do I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Oh, should I approve?
Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Atherton and a second from Ms. Doyle. Ms. Howler? Yes. I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Miley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens? Yes. Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle? Yes. Our consent agenda has been approved. The next item on the agenda is Plan B Updates to Human Achievement: Data from Orange County Schools, Compliance Strategies, Reporting, and Transparent Communication. Dr. Felder?
Thank you, and good evening, Chair McKenzie, Vice Chair Stevens.
Thank you, and good evening Chair McKenzie, Vice Chair Stevens, the entire board, staff, students, and families. Indeed, we have a robust topic here, an important topic. And so the outcomes for this section of tonight's board meeting include providing board members with a review of Plan B signup data and an opportunity to revisit the staggered return and orientation schedules, the impact of remote learning on academic achievement, and current strategies that are proposed to address learning loss. The board will also receive information about the Plan B updates, including three factors that are driving decisions and how those decisions or factors have evolved. You will hear about current community metrics and the twelve principles to safely reopen schools and cluster events that could trigger closing of classrooms and the district. You will also get information about return to school work sites from last week with regards to where there were successes, some of the challenges and the solutions to address the challenges. By the end of this presentation, you would have heard about reporting needs and compliance strategies, as well as COVID-19 communication, flow chart, and tracking dashboards. Lastly, you would have taken action on budget items and, time permitting, received information on the research on school names per the district's equity resolution. So those are the outcomes for Item K. I'm sorry, I. Any questions about the outcomes for this section of tonight's board meeting? Okay, trying to use good wait time. If not, then we're going to move right along. And so the next item in this section of the agenda is to provide the board with an update on Plan B signup. And to do that, I'm going to turn things over to Dr. Dawson, Deputy Superintendent. Dr. Dawson?
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Felder, and good evening Chair McKenzie and Vice Chair Stevens and all of our board members and all of our guests. Thank you so much. At the top, there is a link, but this was also provided in the board update, but I just wanted to give another high-level overview. And one thing I just want to be clear here. This data is not representative of every single one of our students. Please know that. And our demographic data is only representative of those students who followed the link that was sent specifically for them in their emails. But because we wanted to make sure that all of our families had access to sign up for Plan B, we gave other ways to sign up, which did not give us the students' particular demographic information. So I want to be very clear on that. And this is reflective of what was recorded on our signup sheet. But because our school teams were also doing outreach to make sure that they were reaching every single student, some of that data is still being in the process of being put onto all one master list. So I just want to understand, for us to know for sure that this is partial information, but I know that there was some interest in understanding so far, like what we did have as far as demographic information. So as of December eleventh, we had five thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine submissions via this form, and we had one hundred and one partial forms that weren't completed yet, and so schools will be following up. And of that, we had about fifty-eight percent of our students that were selecting to return back to school in person. And then we had forty percent selecting to stay all virtual. And then about two percent that they wanted to connect with their schools to find out more before they decided. And so when you see these four pie charts, again, this is demographic information based on the information that we have for the students, so it is not all of them. And so the first one that you see on your left bottom quadrant are the students that were selecting in-person hybrid. So even with this small number represented, we still have majority of the students wanting to return in person are our white students. And then you see the other groups are smaller in number, nine percent of our black students, thirteen percent of our Hispanic and Latinx families, and then seven percent of our multiracial families, and then about two percent of our Asian families. If you look at the top virtual option one and the three pie charts that you see in a row, this is representative of the families who are selecting to stay all virtual. And then of the three options for K through eight, this is how it breaks down, but as you know, that our high school students do not have virtual option two. So what you see in virtual option two pie chart is strictly your K through eight students. And again, this is just a small percentage of those students that we have records for. And as we compile the complete list, we will have the more robust data for every single one of our students once that is complete. But we just wanted to give you an update as where we are so far. And I know that we'll talk a little bit more later on about the number of students that are opting for bus support, and then those who will be receiving rides to school. So you'll see before school and after school some numbers, and I know that Dr. Felder will share those percentages with you a little bit later. So this is, again, just representative of some of our information, not all. But right now, what school teams and the district teams are working on is to, yes, pull together all of our data into one master list. And then they're also working on the AB cohorts and all of the necessary information that we will need in Power School before they can create bus routes. But you know, our school counselors, they are working with the students who have opted for self-cased to register for classes, and you know, all of the adjusting of schedules that schools have to do to get ready. They're in that process. They're making good progress. And the school teams are working diligently to ensure that we are able to get notices out to families as soon as possible. So, Dr. Felder, that is our update so far as of Plan B data collected on last Friday, December eleventh.
Thank you, Dr. Dawson. Board, any questions?
Ms. Smiley?
Not a question necessarily, just thank you for including the demographic data. And when we get the sort of compiled data of everything, something I would find helpful is understanding for each of these demographic groups. And also, if we have it for free and reduced lunch versus not, of each group, what percentage shows the different options? So like a different cut of this, because I'm trying to do some math myself to figure that out. It's clear, it seems clear, for example, that our black students, the families of black children are much more likely to be choosing a virtual option. But I don't know how different it looks from the district overall. And so that cut would be helpful to me.
Thank you, Mrs. Smiley. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, similar to Sarah, if we could have the numbers along with the percentages, that would help. Just like she said, so we could understand the actual problems.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Ms. Atherton? Keeping with that virtual option one, two, three, it would be helpful to understand how many are in each one of those categories. And as you said, this question about percent of the whole. And, you know, because, as you said, high school doesn't have options too. So I don't know if it's important to show elementary separate from middle and separate from high school. It certainly would be helpful to know how many students are in each one of the virtual options. This is very helpful.
Great. Well, we can provide that information. All right. Anything else? Okay. All right. So if it is okay with the board, I would like to make an adjustment to the order in which the items are presented. As I understand, one of our presenters has another meeting to get to tonight. And so if it's okay with everyone, we're going to jump to Slide fifteen in the deck, and then we'll come back. Because we certainly have some academic data, achievement data that we want to share with the board, and we have three high school principals joining us to provide some additional information from a more qualitative lens around those data. And so if the board is okay with that, we're going to shift to the item on Slide fifteen, and that would be Plan B, three factors that are driving decision-making, and then get to our presenters for tonight and circle back. So if there are no objections, we'll move forward.
We're appreciative of Dr. Benjamin's time and certainly want to honor that.
Absolutely. Okay, so with that said, so with regards to Plan B, there are three factors that are just driving decision-making, that are informing our decisions. And as we continue to plan for and transition to Plan B, and these factors will inform us when we should pause plans or close classrooms and/or schools. So these are the things that impact what we do. So the first factor is information from the governor's office, i.e. executive orders, information from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, as well as information we receive from the North Carolina High School Athletics Association. So for example, a recent executive order issued by the governor requires the wearing of face masks indoors. Certainly, that was something we were already adhering to. And I understand that wasn't really for public schools, as, again, that's something that we are adhering to, but that was an executive order nonetheless. From the North Carolina High School Athletics Association, they recently issued a requirement that all sports must be masked, except when competing. Currently, the only sports competing in Orange County are volleyball and cross-country. So that is an example of information that certainly drives our decision-making. With regards to the second factor, is information from both the Orange County Health Department and the ABC Science Collaborative, which is a public health initiative that brings science and schools together to ensure a safe work and learning environment. And so here, the four community metrics that were developed in collaboration with the Orange County Health Department have evolved. And tonight, Ms. Rebecca Crawford, who is the Deputy Area Command of Orange County COVID-19 Task Force, and I always like to throw in a graduate of Orange County, she's going to review the metrics, the current metrics, and will speak to the evolution process like she did at Friday's town hall meeting. So, but at this time, suffice it to say that while we continue to consider the community metrics, we do pay attention to those. We are in close communication with the Orange County Health Department regarding the community metrics. We must also consider additional information as well as school metrics related to clusters. And so we're going to talk a little bit more about that in just a moment. Information that also must be considered are data, the data, research, and lessons learned from North Carolina districts that have been open in Plan B since August of this year, and the twelve principles for safe reopening of schools, which will be presented by Dr. Benjamin with the ABC Science Collaborative in just a few minutes. So these data are also driving decisions in the district. The third factor is information gained from the monitoring of and lessons learned from our own COVID-19 safety plans, as well as information gained from the district's reporting and compliance strategies, which we'll also review tonight. So before I turn things over to Ms. Crawford and Dr. Benjamin, I just want to touch very briefly on the evolution of the factors driving decisions in the district. So we can go to the next slide. And so here is where we started with the Orange County Health Department. We identified four metrics and the thresholds that we would watch for each. And again, we continue to monitor these four metrics and continue to gauge the thresholds for each of them. Next slide. But then we added additional factors to consider related to each. So for example, while a downward trend in the number of COVID-like illnesses is desired per the Orange County Health Department, their capacity to conduct contact tracing must also be taken into consideration. Another example is the number of hospitalizations. So while we desire stability or four-week downward trend, we have to also consider the hospital's ability to meet the demand as well. So again, we are still monitoring those four metrics, those four community metrics and the thresholds. But there is additional information as the pandemic has evolved, and we learned more that we need to also consider. Next slide, please.
Dr. Felder and Ms. Crawford, can I ask a question here? Because I think that the community really would love to appreciate, at what point would community measures alone create a recommendation from the Health Department for us to go back to Plan C? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does make sense. And so, Ms. Crawford, you are welcome to jump in. But from our collaboration with the Orange County Health Department, two things that that we would really need to pause and consider would be around the ability to contact trace and the hospital's ability to address demand. So, Ms. Crawford, I don't know if you want to add anything else to that. But those are the two that I understand would really give us pause.
Sure. We support Orange County schools. I will say that our monitoring of the trends will continue, and we feel that that is incredibly important when we are looking at transmission within the community. In terms of how does that impact schools based on the research that we have received and reviewed, and I believe you will receive tonight, we do feel that regardless of the level of community transmission, that schools are going to be safer. So we would not make a recommendation to move backwards into Plan C based on these four metrics, which just as a reminder, are those that are also followed by the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services for this that we monitor statewide. We've really struggled throughout this pandemic as to how can we quantify when we would recommend moving back to Plan C, because there are just so many different factors. But I think focusing on the level of transmission within the schools will give you a much better indicator of what your staff can handle, what parents are able to handle, and then ultimately, the rest of the community.
Ms. Crawford, there's not a point where hospitals are deferring patients or something like that that you would recommend Plan C? I'm trying to understand that because I trust you all very much, and I think this board may have its own thresholds. And so if our thresholds are not in alignment, then the board needs to figure out how to transparently communicate what our threshold is. So I guess I just really need to get more clarity.
I think as you receive more information tonight, and then once we all have the same information, I think that will be really helpful, because based on what we've seen, wearing masks and all of the different safety protocols that the school district has put in place and will put in place and will monitor and ensure that are happening make people who are inside those school buildings much safer than they would be either within their own home with community transmission or family transmission or out into restaurants and stores. Just having those masks on the entire time are huge. But again, I'd say the school board has to make those decisions themselves. We, of course, will offer any information that we can to help make those recommendations. But I would encourage you to look at the rest of the data so that you have the same information that we do.
Okay, well, we'll continue to talk about it as the Okay, well, we'll continue to talk about this as the night progresses. Thank you.
Okay, so if we can move to slide eighteen. And so lastly, in collaboration with the Orange County Health Department and the ABC Science Collaborative, again, the evolution of the factors driving decision making in the district now must also include not only the community metrics, as Ms. Crawford just mentioned, but also what's happening within the schools and work sites. So we have to consider those metrics as well. And so specifically, we must consider clusters, which are indicative of the virus's spread in our schools and work sites. And Dr. Benjamin will speak more about this and the actions that should be taken when there is a cluster event as part of his presentation. So know that this slide in particular will be coming back to. So without further ado, I am going to turn things back over to Ms. Crawford. And, and from there, we will give the floor to Dr. Benjamin. So Ms. Crawford?
Thanks, Dr. Felder. I'll be brief. We do know that cases of COVID-19 are increasing in Orange County. These, the metrics that you see on your screen are the most recent full data that we have right now. We know that we initially set that we wanted to see no more than 125 cases per week and we are at double that now. But I will also add that we have been very lucky in our requests to receive more case investigators and contact tracers from the state. And in fact, we have 10 more that are starting on Monday. So that has made our capacity much larger and enabled us to be able to effectively case investigate and contact trace within 24 to 48 hours being notified of a positive case. And so we feel comfortable that we can continue that process even as the cases do increase. We know that COVID-like illness is also not moving in the right direction. Those are those people that present to our emergency departments with symptoms that are similar to COVID-19 and that helps us gauge, again, the level of transmission within our community. We know that our percent positive continues to increase, but we still remain below that 5% metric that was set by the WHO and also the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services of 5%. I anticipate that we will exceed 5% either later this month or early in January, so that is a factor to consider. But at this point, is not one that would mean that we would recommend not reopening as we initially did. We also know that cases or confirmed hospitalizations are increasing across the state and also within the UNC Health System, which was one of our metrics. We do know that they currently do have capacity, so they are not yet at capacity, but we monitor that daily and are in very close communication with UNC Health. All that to say, as I said earlier, we do feel that it's important to monitor these metrics. And that is for the rest of our community and how we are making policy decisions around that, how we are sharing information with the public and helping everyone understand. But I do, we as a health department have determined that we support Orange County schools reopening, regardless of the metrics. Are there any questions?
I do have a question. Thank you, Ms. Crawford. I'm curious if it would be helpful if we had the capability to do more testing in our community or at our schools. A number of us are aware of a pilot program for that in the state. And I was just curious what that would be looking like in Orange County if it's something that's interesting statewide.
I think that's an incredibly fabulous suggestion and we fully support Orange County schools looking into and joining the antigen test project or pilot project that the state has put out. So our health director has been in contact with Dr. Felder about that and we do fully support that. I will say that we have almost doubled the amount of testing. We, I just looked at a report just now and at one point we did almost 10,000 or 10,000 tests within a week. And that's just, it's crazy. It's, it's a wonderful and a difficult problem to have. But we continue to have a very high level of testing in Orange County for our population. And we anticipate continuing to offer that. And that will be another way that staff and students and families have a known place to get testing if they have symptoms and or have been exposed. So I do think that's very important for reopening.
Thank you. Ms. Miley?
Yes, I want to first just thank you, Ms. Crawford, for the, I guess, just the level of clarity about the health department's recommendation about not making these decisions based on these metrics. I just, I think clarity about what we are and aren't making decisions on is just really important. So I want to thank you for that. That, I know that the hospitalizations and hospitalization capacity is one of the things that we're considering. I know why we've been looking at UNC. In asking a question earlier this week of Dr. Felder around, I saw a Times, New York Times article about ICU capacity and Durham's ICU being at 97% capacity. And so asked about that. And in the course of that, it, it seems like a lot of our zip codes, if you divide things into health service areas, as the Times piece did, many of our district zip codes go to Duke, go to Durham. And so I'm wondering if we've made any progress in terms of being able to consider the regional hospital capacity as opposed to the UNC system.
We do not have access to the Duke numbers. I will tell you that from our conversations with UNC Health, they have been in contact with Duke and we understand that they do have a higher capacity, but they do have capacity left. That, I don't know how much longer that will last and I think that is something that we all have to consider. But we do look at it as a regional approach. The UNC system alone is a regional view. We are not looking at our neighbors to the west and Alamance County, however. This is what we have available in order to measure. But I would encourage everyone to also monitor the statewide hospitalization numbers. Because one of the reasons that we look at UNC Health as a system is that as one hospital in a different part of the state is a part of that system may be maxing out, they may transfer patients to UNC Maine, which is in Chapel Hill. So really, it is, it's a larger effort of do you need to divert patients to open beds?
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments before we shift to Dr. Benjamin?
We're ready.
Okay, I can't see everyone. So that's, that's what I'm struggling with here, but that's okay. All right, so Ms. Crawford will hang on and at this time, we would like to introduce, again, to the board, Dr. Danny Benjamin, Distinguished Professor of Pediatrics, Duke University and co-chair of the ABC Science Collaborative. Tonight, Dr. Benjamin is going to present the 12 principles for safely reopening school. He also has some exciting new data to share that's been collected statewide from school districts that have been open since August 2020, school districts I call the Trail Blazers. And he also is going to review a process the district can use to make decisions about how to investigate the need to contemplate or close a classroom of school and that goes back to that slide around clusters. So with that, without further ado, I'm going to turn things over to Dr. Benjamin. Welcome, Dr. Benjamin.
Great, thank you for having me. Go ahead, next slide, please. Go ahead, next slide, please. So as we all know, the decisions that you all are facing really are difficult and this particular slide has a picture of the co-chair for the Science Collaborative, Dr. Zimmerman. And when she and I like to both remind ourselves and everyone on the call, we don't make decisions as to whether or not schools open or close. We are not here to give a strong opinion as to whether or not you should the, what we are charged with doing is providing you data and to provide some context around that data on if you decide to make certain decisions, what kind of informed decisions you can make. Go ahead, next slide, please. As you all know that there are many stakeholders across a school, next slide if you would, across school districts. And just as a reminder, the Science Collaborative pairs scientists and physicians at not only Duke and UNC, but now with our expansion across the country, partnerships with other universities and with other organizations to help community leaders make the decisions that they need to make and to understand the data that they need to understand to make informed decisions around school. And of course, this is seed funding for this is provided by the National Student Council. Go ahead, next slide, please. As you know, it's a decision-making educational resources on the ABC Science Collaborative website, which if you Google ABC Science Collaborative, you can pull that up. And advancing public health via, via research. Go ahead, next slide. The current reach in North Carolina is these districts here, we're in the 50s, 56 districts signed up from the state. Go ahead, next slide, please. We've recently expanded into partnerships to Alaska, California, Georgia, Missouri, Ohio, Michigan, and we're adding Kansas as well. And the National Association of Educators and CDC are groups that we are working with. And based on some of the data that you'll see tonight, we've outlined those data to the CDC and they've made some changes in their emphasis, not only around their guidance for schools, but also in their guidance as it relates to when schools open or close. Go ahead, next slide, please. So just as a reminder, one of the key questions that the collaborative has sought to answer is does the opening of schools result in more infections in the community? The same amount of infections in the community? Or is it possible that schools are a place where there are less infection, less transmission, and thus a safer place for the adults and children within schools? And so the 56 school districts joined the collaborative. On a weekly basis, we worked with those leaders to share lessons learned. And 11 of those school districts were able to be open for in-person instruction for all nine weeks, the first nine weeks of instruction. They and their local health department staff adjudicated primary versus secondary transmission. So primary transmission is, I, I develop, I'm in third grade and I develop COVID-19 and I go to my third grade classroom. If I infect one of my classmates, that's secondary or within school transmission. Or if I infect one of the adults in the school system, that's secondary or within school transmission. So that primary versus secondary infection is adjudicated in these data by local health department, just like Ms. Crawford would do it for you all in Orange County. Superintendents then met weekly with the Science Collaborative to share lessons learned. By lessons learned, for example, there was a cluster in a pre-K class where in August masking was not required. They had five or six children develop infection. And since that time, that school district and the others in the collaborative have moved to have masking required across all ages in these school districts. These school districts reflect over 90,000 students and staff, about 97,000. Now, as a comparison, if a school district had 10,000 children and 1,000 staff, but only 8,000 students showed up for in-person instruction and 2,000 children chose the all-remote environment, the denominator here would be only those children who attended face-to-face instruction. This is 11 school districts. There were 773 community-acquired SARS-CoV-2 or COVID-19 infection documented by molecular testing. Through contact tracing, North Carolina Health Department staff determined that there were 32 additional within-school transmission and there were no instances of a child-to-adult documented transmission. Go ahead, next slide, please. Now during this time, these particular 11 school districts had community transmission similar to what Orange County has at this moment. These are school districts that were on the order of 200 to 400 cases of infection per 100,000 population per 14 days or one to two cases per 1,000 population per week. So about this amount of community spread that you all in Orange County face right now. Go ahead, next slide, please. So just for the formation of the cohort, about half of North Carolina traditional public schools participated in the ABCs. Of those, about half did not offer any in-person instruction in the first nine weeks of the districts that offered in-person instruction in the first nine weeks. About half were open for all nine weeks. And of the districts that were open for all nine weeks, 11 signed data use agreements and agreed to participate in this particular research. Of note, the data were anonymized. That is, it is by school, by week, but no individual children or adults were identified in the transmission of data. Go ahead, next slide, please. So this slide outlines the districts in North Carolina. These districts in, that participated were on average a little bit bigger than Orange County Health Department. These 11 school districts have a breakdown of race and ethnicity, as you see here in this table. And they were open for the nine weeks of instruction. Go ahead, next slide, please. Now, these are the counties. I've received permission from the counties to name them in these presentations. These data are under peer review. Right now, we submitted them about a week and a half ago. We had a pretty quick flip on the initial peer review. Just got those comments back this morning. That, that review process is going well. To give you some concept of the districts here, Alexander has a pop student population that's not too terribly different from Orange County. About 5,000 students. They only had about 4,000 students show up for in-person instruction. You know, Davie County, again, about 6,000 students. And if you'll look at Yadkin, it's got about 5,000 students. Now, as a frame of reference, if you were to go to DHHS dashboard right now, at the moment, Orange County has about 350, 357 cases per 100,000 residents per 14 days. Alexander County has 1,100 cases per 100,000 residents per 14 days. Alexander County is still open and they have had one case of within-school transmission across their entire school district. Ash County is at 801 cases per 100,000 residents and has had, since the start of school, has had exactly one case of within-school transmission as part of the lessons learned. The superintendent reviewed film footage. This was a student headed off to middle school from the Virginia State Line. She was able to document that indeed that student had taken off their mask along with several other children in the back of the bus. When talking about lessons learned, this is the sort of thing that the collaborative have done, the school superintendents have. When they're seeing secondary transmission or when they are having concerns about secondary transmission, one of the places that they're looking at is bus transportation because they've got video documentation of mask adherence. So these school districts, again, are in very successful in keeping down the secondary transmission. So go ahead, next slide, please. Now, it's very, it's abundantly clear, if schools were to just open, they will make the pandemic worse. This has been seen repeatedly. It's been seen in the state of Florida. It's been seen in parts of Georgia. It was seen in parts of Western Europe, even when community transmission was low in parts of Western Europe. When you put hundreds of people into a building without masks and without proper public health intervention, even if you have very, very low community transmission, you are going to make the pandemic worse. You're going to get plenty of within-school transmission. Likewise, if you have an inconsistent public health approach, that is a pathway to failure. We've seen that in some of the counties of Georgia, where they've required masking during school hours and during class instruction, but have the belief that children should be playing football without masks on, and that people should watch football games without masks on. This is a pathway to failure. The state of Utah has seen the same thing, very good adherence within school classroom, but very poor adherence for extracurricular activities. And this is a way to make the pandemic worse and to put your people at greater public health risk. But if you have strict adherence to the NC toolkit, the three Ws, wearing the mask, distancing, and washing hands, and what we'll get into, the 12 principles based on lessons learned, with 773 community infections, in the state of North Carolina, each person who gets infected infects, on average, one to two other people. That's why numbers keep going up in the pandemic. And yet, we only observed 32 secondary infections. Now, it is acknowledged that not every child and every teacher was tested every day. So it is possible, obviously, to miss some transmission. However, that's also true of the community. And in fact, in most of these districts, because they had extra resources specifically allocated to contact tracing in their school, that's how their schools spent some of their resources, was on additional contact tracing and additional contact tracing support. Contact tracing in the schools was better and more robust than in the community. So we're really comparing apples to apples here when we look at this. Imperfect testing, and if anything, better contact tracing. So in a school district of 10,000 students, you can expect a couple of molecular test-positive secondary infections during a nine-week period of instruction. And in fact, if you think, how do we spend our time? This is really a public health decision, right? I may or may not engage in behavior that puts myself at additional risk. But from a public health decision, public health, should we be spending our times in restaurants or in schools? Should we spend our time in the community or in schools? School shutdown in adherent schools probably leads to more infection because in school shutdown, people who are normally in school spend more time in a low-compliance environment, that is, the state of North Carolina, rather than a high-compliance environment, that is, the schools, where school leadership is able to document masking and other public health adherence in the 90s and through their interventions. So that's mask over nose, mouth, chin, the target being 99% adherence. Even if there's no value to in-person instruction, and the only reason to have in-person instruction is to prevent, to have a space, to a safe space as it relates to safer, not, no place is perfectly safe, but a safer place for prevention of COVID-19. Children and staff are likely better off in school, provided that there's adherence. Again, this can't be emphasized enough. This is really about within-school adherence. Go ahead, next slide, please. So how do we measure how well a school or a school district is doing? So in the spring of this year, we thought, oh, my gosh, COVID is going to be similar to influenza. Children are going to make the pandemic worse. We should not have schools open. It then became apparent from France, from Australia, from China, that in a low-incidence setting, schools could successfully reopen. And in the summer of this year, the CDC and many health departments used community metrics as the basis for opening up schools. Since that time, there have now been in several states, including Missouri, Kansas, North Carolina, and others, places where there is high community spread and very low within-school spread. And as a result of that, the, we've presented these data to the CDC. We've been talking with school leadership task force from the CDC the past couple of weeks, and there's additional guidance that we'll get to as it relates to the CDC's view on school reopening. But reasons for the schools and the school district to take a very hard look at closing or having at least a conversation about whether or not the school environment is as safe as you want it, is when you start to see clusters and you start to see secondary transmission. You can see secondary transmission without a cluster. And when you start to see that secondary transmission, as adjudicated by your folks in public health, that's a time to really take a look at whether or not a school should reopen. I've got a couple of other reasons for schools to consider closing. I'll get to those here in a minute. Go ahead, next slide, please. So really, the principles for safe schools. So these are the lessons learned across superintendents, across school districts based on experience. So number one is be transparent. It's going to be very difficult to establish trust with the adults who work inside the school and with the parents outside of school if a district is not transparent about reporting cases of COVID-19 by week, by school. So that's a recommendation from the collaborative. This idea actually came from Gaston County, and they still do it kind of old-school with PDF that they post every week. Other school districts do it with a much more kind of searchable electronic database. Regardless of how you do this, be transparent. Have a roadmap for contact tracing. You guys have an extremely strong public health and health department. I'm grateful for that as a resident of the county. Thank you for that, Ms. Crawford, you and your team. But having a roadmap that Ms. Crawford can pull out and say in a transparent way, this is how we do contact tracing, and you read it and it's understandable. Implementing lessons learned, Orange County was clearly one of the early adopters of the Science Collaborative. Working with a trusted third party, you guys have done this from the beginning to analyze data so that other districts can learn from each other. Leveraging school-based metrics, as I've outlined, that is secondary transmission. If you have a low transmission rate in your community and you have a high transmission rate in your schools, that's a failure. If you have a high transmission rate in your community and your school district has a very, very low transmission, that is a success for your school and a failure in other parts of the community. Go ahead, next slide. Fighting pandemic fatigue. This is not quite so relevant for Orange County now, but you're going to want to put these plans in place. I've reviewed several of these with Dr. Felder. She's actually been a leader on some of these across the state and her views on how some of this should be done. That has been picked up by some of her peers. She did that during, I think it was the after-school programs, if I'm saying that correctly, that you all had put in place. And that kind of cycle of learning has been a hallmark of the collaborative. Making a detailed schedule. Again, Central Elementary School in Hillsborough provided the model template for, this is how in children and adults will move through the school district, through the school with pictures so that families and children and staff understand what's happening. Considering special plans for extracurriculars, this is where you really want to keep a close eye on things, whether it's band or sports, the special needs community, this is where you want to put extra resources. And this is something that Orange County is focused on. Developing a communication plan, you'll have that and then walk and then run, that is, go into hybrid first rather than bringing everybody back at the same time. So Orange County clearly very solid here, very solid on the North Carolina School District, and very solid on the three Ws. Go ahead, next slide. So we presented the Orange County schools are doing that. This is, this is, I rated yours independently from documents that your school leadership had sent to me. Go ahead, next slide, please. So the 11 school districts that were provided data, plus several others, including Orange County and Wake County, have agreed to do the following, providing a plan that addresses the toolkit, the three Ws and the 12 principles, having the ABC faculty assess that plan, provide data on primary and secondary infection by school by week that's adjudicated by your health department, and receive feedback and work together to prevent within-school transmission and combat pandemic fatigue. Go ahead, next slide, please. So two new guidance from the CDC. CDC in the December 11, 2020 MMR, MMWR, morbidity, mortality, weekly report that was just released on Friday, had dealing with the pandemic in communities with moderate to high transmission. I think that I sent a copy of that onward, and that's available for board members to read. That includes, schools should be the last to close and the first to reopen when they can do so safely. So again, if you're in a shelter-in-place situation, clearly, schools should be closed if it's a situation where other entities are open, at least from the CDC, you really want to be focused on what you can do safely. This guidance document, by the way, is not just limited to K through 12. So there are comments on other aspects of society as well in that document. You really, this is an important clause. You really want to have a culture of safety and trust in the school district. So the high-risk group, obviously, are the older adults. This is what we want to drive to when we look at any mitigation strategies. This is what we want to drive to if we look at the policies that are in place, if we are making this a safer environment for the higher-risk attendees, then we'll have a safe work environment. If we have a safe work environment, we'll have a safe learning environment. That's the standard that we want, is a safer environment. Nothing, nothing's risk-free, but from a public health standpoint, we want a safer environment. Distancing is especially going to be important in the lack of masking. This is a, there's a recent report here around mealtime in restaurants, especially if you start pushing air around, you can do some things in unexpected ways when you try to blow air through via fans through rooms. You can put some people at higher risk, paradoxically. This distancing is really going to be key around breakfast, lunch, and water breaks, and eating outside whenever possible. Testing, it's not clear if it's helpful in K through 12 schools in order to manage safety. But what's testing can do, and I really liked Ms. Crawford's response, enthusiastic response to the question around testing, what testing can do is it helps document how well you're achieving your goals in these other areas. It helps you look at how well are we really doing? We have a closer feel. We have a closer finger on that pulse. Not only that, but it also develops trust within the adults that are in the, in the school community and for the parents within the school community if there's regular testing, and it can document quality improvement. So while it's not a condition of in-person instruction, the, if I had to spend extra resources as a school, areas where I would spend extra resources as a school district would be, as we've stated earlier, the adapted curriculum, the masking compliance and documenting that, and contact tracing, as Ms. Crawford outlined, the increased capacity for her team is very important, and partnering with her team is very important. And then on testing, not so much random testing or testing everybody, but rather to document how well things are going with your mitigation strategies. And we can help with the details of some of those strategies, if that's something you choose to pursue to do. Quarantine, CDC, based on our data and some other data, where it's clear that we're quarantining about 100 people for every secondary transmission that occurs, has modified its quarantine recommendations. Right now, it's at 14 days. DHHS has not moved away from the 14 days as a, as, as a school district. Within this state, you will, in all likelihood, follow what the state's doing. You just want to be aware that the CDC is changing some of its guidelines, and there are pros and cons. If that change becomes an option for you all, there's pros and cons to changing that policy. But the important thing for you is to fall in line with NCDHHS. Go ahead, next slide, please. So we have some data from Plan A. It's from the school districts that went into Plan A sometime between October 5th and around October 19th. They have reported interim data. These data have not been cleaned. These data have not been verified. These data have not been validated. We've just started to receive them as an interim send from these districts. They should be interpreted with extreme caution. But however, there was no difference for those five districts as it was related to elementary school education and secondary transmission. B versus A, that's Yadkin County in Plan B, same amount of secondary transmission in Plan A. Alexander, same amount of transmission in elementary school, B versus A. Again, I do not want to overinterpret these data. It's, it's too early yet. We'll be asking for all the districts to send that to us, and we'll be able to give a thoughtful analysis and a thoughtful interpretation at that time. But I get asked by school districts so frequently about this, and because I have the data in front of me, I want to be transparent about it. You know, the recent CDC guidelines, I'm sorry, I'm on my fourth school board presentation today. So this slide's actually from Wake County, where their early data were reassuring. So I'm sorry to have Wake County Public School System text on this. I hope the board members here won't be insulted by that. The, there are a couple of reasons in addition to metrics within the school to close. And I think Ms. Crawford has touched on those before, but I'll just reemphasize them. One is if contact tracing breaks down. Another really is if we're in a situation where the, the hospital bed space, I can tell you that interpreting, it will be much easier for you all to interpret bed space in the UNC system than it will be to try than it will be to try and discern bed space in the Duke system for, there's a whole host of reasons about that. But during the winter time, we titrate beds and capacities in a way that you really, my suggestion for you is to work with your health department and to really keep those lines of communication going between health department and UNC. It's very difficult to interpret the Duke data, especially if you're from outside of Duke. It's difficult enough to interpret it as a physician who attended patients today in, in the hospital. The other, the other reason would be to, if you've got staffing difficulties. So there are times when the infection rate in some of the counties can get to be so high that they can have difficulty staffing their school districts. And there are several counties that have closed down schools in the last week or so for that particular reason. So there is closure for virus, which is within school transmission, and then there's closure for staffing because you're not able, because of quarantine reasons, you're not able to staff to a sufficient level to provide safe instruction environment and pandemic mitigation environment. Those would be additional reasons and in point of fact, if you look at Orange County School District's reasons for closing in a more, it's a more granular document. It points out those very reasons to potentially have schools closed. With that, I think that that's it.
Can I ask you one question? This information is really helpful. So, I'm one, I'm thinking again about hospitalization and wondering if these meaningful metrics are sort of things that lots of school boards that you are advising are using, have Durham County made sense of hospital availability? If it's difficult for you to do so?
I want to, maybe my comment didn't come out quite right. It's very the most clear and the most interpretable hospital bed availability is a conversation like your health department is having with hospital leadership at UNC. Because you're able to put a lot of things in confidence as in context that you can't do just by looking at hey, X percent of beds are full at a particular hospital. There are all sorts of things that hospitals can do to drive their percentages one way or another and can take patients from around the world to provide medical care for them and can do things like titrate up and titrate down elective procedures which take up bed space and around staffing and around nurses and around travel nurses. It's very, very difficult to get your hands around all that context unless you're having a transparent communication. Looking at the number and saying, oh, it's 97 or 98% full. Because in 2019, we were regularly 99, 99 and a half percent full in 2018 and 2017.
So that makes sense to me. I guess, you know, I'm also considering the hospital availability for my community and I know that a lot of us have healthcare that only covers Duke hospitals because many of us work in the Duke system, for example. And, and so I guess this is a broader question, but it's something I certainly consider. Just for the people of Orange County who need to Duke hospital, I mean, it's not something that is it something that we should be reaching out to have a transparent conversation with them based on that worry?
So, when staffing and capacity become I want to make sure I don't get out of line with my own hospital here, so.
I can help if you needed to.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. I really, yeah, thank you.
Okay, so part of our discussions too around hospitalizations are with a regional group called Mid-Carolina Hospital Resources. I forget, the Mid-Carolina RAC is how they call it. But essentially, there is a group at UNC that coordinates all of the area hospitals within this area, not just those that are in the UNC system. And so when we have these conversations and we meet with them weekly, they're also looking at the capacities of all of those hospitals. And at this time, they feel comfortable with where we are, stressed, but comfortable. So we can continue to find capacity as we have increasing cases. I will say that the state of North Carolina is nervous about it and the governor may make some changes this week in order to free up those beds as Dr. Benjamin talked about and to have hospital leadership feel comfortable making some of those difficult decisions in order to free up more space. But as of right now, things are okay in terms of hospitalizations in our area. And that's, that's hard when you can't put a number on it and you can't, I can't give you a capacity and a top point that says that we are uncomfortable. All I ask is that you know that we continue to have these conversations with the area.
Hey, thank you for saying that better than I was struggling with.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions, Ms. Miley?
Dr. Benjamin, I watched the staff presentation today and then the Wake School Board meeting and then now this, so I feel like we've been in meetings together all day. So thank you for being at this one. And the data from the other school districts is really heartening and all of this is really informative. What is on my mind is how important like getting that understanding of our secondary transmissions, right? Is going to be super paramount, right, to decision-making about keeping schools open or closed, among other things. And so I want to be very clear on understanding how we're how those were identified in the study, right, that we're sort of basing this on as well as how we're gonna define what a secondary transmission is in school as opposed to a community case that's come into the school. And so I am, I, I have, I'm seeing two different definitions of what kind of makes for an epidemiological link between cases. So, and I'm wondering which one was used in the ABC collaborative data and which one we're going to use. So the the state DHHS says a plausible epidemiological link is cases should be present in the same general setting during the same time period, e.g. same shift, same classroom, same physical area. And there should not be a more likely source of exposure for identified cases, e.g. household or close contact to a confirmed case in another setting. Right? So that's one definition is you might be in the same classroom and we don't have a clear link somewhere else. And the OCS FAQ is about what do we mean by a cluster says that the cases are linked epidemiologically, meaning these cases had close contact defined as being within six feet of an infected individual for at least 15 minutes. And some of my questions in the past have been around things like ventilation and some of this sort of longer distance transmission, right, and whether we should be concerned about that. I guess I'm wondering whether, whether the data used to identify, you know, the 35 or so cases in that data so far, if they're using which of those definitions they're using? And then which will we be using for identifying a secondary transmission in schools?
So there's a difference between identifying secondary transmission and identifying folks at close contact and at risk and needing to be quarantined under current definitions for quarantine. And you, that second definition you read, and I'll defer to Ms. Crawford on this because it's going to be her on point for this. As I heard it, and maybe I didn't hear it correctly, but that second point sounded more like identifying folks who were contacts. Is that correct?
I think so, but I, I wouldn't, I do think there is some blurring too between the different definitions that you said, one is a little bit more specific than the other. But we follow as the Orange County Health Department, we do follow the Department of Health and Human Services definition.
Yeah. And so that first definition is around the DHHS standard, which the we could not find a more, we could not find a plausible link outside the schools. I'm butchering your reading of the quote. But that first definition that you wrote was the secondary transmission definition.
Great. So the, the ABC collaborative, the data from the 11 school districts would have used the DHHS version of that. So if two students in a classroom tested positive, they were way across the classroom from each other, you know, had masks off during lunch or something like that. And the second student did not have a like identified connection to an external case, it would have been identified as in-school transmission.
So what you'll do in Orange County, I'm going to defer to Ms. Crawford on because I, our very strong agreement with DHHS is we're not going to be wandering into the purview of the health department.
Thanks.
And I could just share that we would have to get very deep into exactly what happened in that scenario and who was around who and how close and who was wearing masks. And in some cases, masks may not matter based on how you're wearing them. So there are a lot of variables and we do have a lot of questions around ventilation and what impact, but we will spend most of our time focusing on proximity and whether they were doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Okay, I think, I think that that answers my question, but let me just make sure that I understand. So, in, if, if because here's, you know, I'm reading some of our plans and, you know, students may have their masks off for 15 minutes to eat breakfast and then 15 minutes later to have lunch and you know, that adds up to more than 15 minutes and the 15 minutes or the six feet are not like, you know, golden, you know, perfect boxes or something. So, the, the if, if two students have COVID within a couple of days together in the same classroom and you can't establish like what would be the threshold for saying like this is, this is community, the second student is community also because, you know, their parents went to the grocery store or something, or, or are you going to say that we actually have, have an explanation for the second student as well, like their parent has tested positive?
From the health department's perspective, I think what may be helpful is perhaps we come up with some scenarios where you know, anonymous scenarios where something may have been a connection for close contact or where we would have make a, made a recommendation for them to quarantine. So I'm not a case investigator and there's many, many different scenarios, but would that be helpful if we came up with a few scenarios where that would be likely?
I think so. I'm curious what other board members think. I just think everything about our reopening decisions, if, if it's all hinging on secondary transmissions and like a really tight handle on that, then like I think understanding our testing and like whether we're doing enough testing and then also understanding more about that contact tracing process and when would we determine or wouldn't we determine that it was a secondary case? I think that that would be helpful.
I will share also that the health department staff have been meeting with Orange County school staff. I believe they'll meet for the third time this week doing tabletop exercises of exactly what you're talking about. And so they have scenarios that they're reviewing and walking through what is the step-by-step process of how they would react to each of these different situations. And so that, that could possibly be information that Dr. Felder and staff could share with the board.
That's great. Thank you. I appreciate the partnership from, from both of you.
I first thank you both for this information. It's really helpful. My questions are in the context of 60% of our families want to come back to school and they want to come back to a safe school environment. So the pressure is definitely on. And the county were doing great. Thank Bartley to you all, to Rebecca and her team, and thanks to every citizen in Orange County who is doing their job. And so I'm pretty proud to be in that space. So I've really a couple of questions. One is how does the increasing incident rate that we're seeing throughout the, the state affect the studies and the research that, that the ABC collaborative is doing? So the numbers that you're presenting, how is the increasing community spread affecting incident rates in school? And we have a particularly challenging situation with our neighbors to the west, if you will, the Alamance County is red. And so just don't know what, how is that affecting us and the safety of our school? So just really basic.
All right, okay, so the, as far as, let's see, let's go over some of those numbers. So at the moment, Orange County is at 357 per 100,000 population per, for 14 days. Alamance is at 840. Alamance has not provided data to us as far as they're within school transmission. But several school districts with a higher community transmission in Alamance has, have provided secondary transmission data to us, including data as recently collected as Friday. And that includes Ardell at 968 per 100,000. Remember Alamance at 840, Orange at 357. Alexander County at 1,104 cases per 100,000 residents per 14 days. Ash County at 801, very similar to Alamance. Those counties, Gaston County, similar types of transmission that, that you're seeing in Gaston County, 1,006 cases per 100,000 residents. Gaston County again doing really, really well with respect to preventing secondary transmission. And they've got some settings that are extraordinarily challenging that, that you simply are not facing in, in Orange County. So, what we've seen is that the rate of community transmission certainly correlates with the amount of cases that show up at school. The primary or community acquired cases. But community cases do not and have not predicted secondary transmission. What prevents transmission within the schools is leadership and adherence. Are the people in that school district acting together as a community at every level to keep each other safe? Is there accountability about mask-wearing at all times by all people while on school? Is there accountability about mask wearing at all times by all people while on school property? And this really has to be a community effort. The board has got to provide leadership on this. The superintendent's office has got to provide leadership on this. The principals have to provide leadership on this. The parents, as far as encouraging their children to wear masks when they go to school, have got to provide leadership at the house on this. This is something where a community succeeds or fails together. And there are districts in North Carolina that are, that extremely successful. And there are certainly districts where there have been great failures, predominantly those outside the state. If you look at private schools in North Carolina, their performance has been very, very mixed. That's because they're not taking it seriously. The transmission has not, community transmission has not predicted success or failure. It's really been the adherence and the compliance. And you can see those differential rates in counties where private schools have been open and public schools have been open. And private schools are having clusters at a rate far higher than the public schools are.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Rapperton?
Also wanted to thank Delbo for all your time and all the insight and information I would have given us. You talk a lot about the mask and how important that is. The question I have is currently we have our teachers in the building and when they're in their classroom by themselves, they can take off their mask. And that seems a little counter to decide masks should be on all the time. How risky is this for the other people in the building to have that ability?
All right, so there's two ways that having masks off can, can get you into trouble, even if there's very few people in the building. One way is, and the, and the bigger concern that I if I had a concern, it would be this. Making and having good habits is an important part of a unified, consistent, public health response. And for the last nine months, whenever I've been in Duke property, I've had that mask on. There's no questions asked. And I know everybody around me is going to have that mask on, no questions asked. And that sets up a culture and a behavioral expectation that's very, very consistent. Now, on a personal level, I've also been wearing the mask and I go into all sorts of other environments where masking is very variable. And once you get into a situation where masking is, is inconsistent, you just really want to drive to a consistent behavioral expectation. Now, is somebody in the room with the door closed, with nobody else in the room and they're infected, are they going to be transmitting COVID as we understand COVID in December of 2020? No, it's not like measles and varicella. So from an individual patient transmission, you, you you can't say like that you're placing people down the hall at risk like you are with measles or varicella. But if person number one has their mask off in their room and they've got a fan in their room and it's blowing air outside of their room and unbeknownst to them, somebody else is nearby, can you ultimately cause harm? Well, turns out if you start blowing virus around, yes. Yes, you can. So I don't want to get out of line from what DHHS allows. On the other hand, it's a lot, consistency and approach is very important with respect to public health measures.
Thank you.
I did have one other question. On the reusable mask, what is the efficacy or lifespan of them? The reason I ask this is recently at work, I heard during the safety presentation that, you know, here's how you use the mask that we are issuing at work and you can only wash these six times and must replace them. And I had not heard anywhere somebody putting a life time on the mask, you know, whether it's cloth or other. So just wanted to get some perspective on that. And is this something we should be, you know, telling people they should monitor or be concerned with, especially as time goes on, using a standard mask every time?
Okay, so the cloth masks are meant to be washed and reused. The disposable masks are not, don't have that option. The N95 mask, which is not relevant in the school setting, but in the hospital setting, have been reused after a well-defined procedure. And upon multiple reusing of that particular type mask, under using those particular type procedures, they can have a shelf life that's a little bit variable by brand. So this is not something that in the in-school environment that I would focus on. What I would focus on with mask in the in-school environment is, you know, loops around the ear, whether it's by tying or more commonly loops. I worry about the bandanas. There's mixed data right now on gaiters. So I would just keep it simple, make sure something goes around the ears as far as masking is concerned.
See any questions? So is this the end of your presentation, Dr. Benjamin and Ms. Crawford?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, thank you both so much for being here. We're so grateful. We just can't tell you how much we appreciate your leadership and expertise in this very difficult situation.
Great. Thank you for, thank you for having me. And I really, when you look at what the early plans that Orange County has put into place, you all are head and shoulders above 90 some odd percent of the school districts nationally. You all wake about two dozen other districts here in the state of North Carolina. Have really put together some very impressive preparation. I can't promise you success, but you have put yourself in a position to succeed. And thank you for having me.
Well, we definitely honor your involvement in those plans and again are just so appreciative to you and to Ms. Crawford and Ms. Stewart and all of the people that we've had in leadership positions who are experts in this field, who are wanting to protect the health of our students and our staff members in our community. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay. So, all right. Just trying to, we've been working behind the scenes to see which direction to go in next. And we've made the decision, given where we are this evening in terms of time. Again, this was a very rich discussion, great information shared. And so we're not regretting that in the least. So at this point, we're actually going to go to slide 40 and and so, and talk a little bit about the return to school and work sites this week, some of the successes, challenges and solutions. And then from there, we're going to talk about reporting compliance strategies that we have in place. We heard, you heard Dr. Benjamin say that that is one of the 12 principles. And so we want to share what those look like in Orange County. We then want to review our revised, as part of our lessons learned over the past couple of weeks. We've revised our communication flow chart. And so again, adhering to those 12 principles, we meet regularly to debrief various incidents and such, and an effort to learn lessons and make adjustments. So we want to do that. And then talk about the dashboard. So we have a dashboard that is currently posted. But when more of our students returned, we have another iteration of the dashboard that we want to share tonight as well. And then I would say, I just want you to know that we decided that we will forego the presentation on the data that we wanted to share tonight, student achievement data. We will certainly share those data with the board. So you will have these data, but know that we will have the high school principals come back in January, at the January 11th meeting. And we promised that they're going to go first. And so they will have a chance to discuss these data with you then, but you'll have it prior to that. So does that sound like a plan? And then we'll shift back to, to ensure we touch on the, and present the budget items tonight. Those are important and want to get to those tonight as well. So does that sound like a plan to move forward for tonight? Any concerns about the revisions to the agenda and the flow of the items that we'll get to?
Mr. Rapperton?
So I don't have a problem with the changes, but I do just want to say, you know, I would like to see us look at the rapid testing cost, independent of the pilot. And I know we've had emails about it. I just think personally it's an important tool for us to have. And I don't want to leave this topic without, you know, just stating, let's get some prices on it to see what it takes if we do not have any pilot.
I completely agree. And I think that we, I suppose we would all be willing to meet for a special meeting to approve that cost if it was necessary so that we could get something in place before, you know, ideally before staff returns from break.
Okay. Any other comments before we, recommendations before we move forward?
I think we're ready.
Okay, so let's do just that. So again, last week was our return to schools and work sites, week one. And as I shared previously, there were a number of successes. Certainly it wasn't a week without challenges and certainly gave us an opportunity to problem solve and address some of those challenges. And so I'm not going to go through each of these bullets, but you have the information here just with regards to successes. And so certainly we had some reluctant staff initially coming back, reluctant to do so, but by the end of the week, had staff reporting that they were feeling better about returning. So that was certainly a success. Also, small groups continue to, to grow. And tonight, unfortunately, you won't hear about some of the small groups that returned last week at the high school level. But there was a positive reaction from the students and staff to have these students back. And look forward to providing more information about that. And then again, it certainly gave us an opportunity, what we thought was a success, is an opportunity to operationalize our safety plans and have an opportunity to learn lessons. So not a surprise, we have plans, but those plans are only as good as they are actualized and operationalized. So they may look great on paper, but until you have to apply them, you don't know what you don't know, right? And so this week certainly gave us an opportunity to operationalize our plans and learn some lessons. With regards to challenges, there were, there was a PPE challenge around a hand sanitizer for classrooms. So the order that we were anticipating and kept getting updates on that it's in a truck on its way, did not arrive in time for the first day of teachers and instructional staff returning. But we did find a workaround and we found a solution to that and were able to purchase bottles of hand sanitizer locally. Hand sanitizer that has, that's alcohol-based. And so we were a little bit of a scramble there, but again, great teamwork over the weekend to ensure that that hand sanitizer was in place. We did have some mechanical issues with regards to some of our boilers, but those repairs are underway. And so we're moving along with that. The communication flow, I mentioned that by operationalizing our plan, we discovered that, you know, we've got these three communication or two communication plans. It would be better to streamline them and we needed to add some more staff to the flow, communication flow process. So you'll hear more about that shortly. And we expanded that communication flow to not only include what to do or what that communication flow should look like for positive cases and presumptive cases, but also exposures. We, another challenge that we've found last week was that, you know, as folks who are just dedicated to our students and our work, we often come to work and with headaches and aches and pains, et cetera, it's just, you know, I call it being troopers. And certainly not a great thing to do, but that's just what we do as educators. We, you know, clear a path, we find a way, we make things happen. And including when it comes to how we're feeling. And so it was certainly an opportunity last week to remind staff that this is not a time to be a trooper. If you are not feeling well, please don't attribute it to say your seasonal allergies or that, well, I had a flu shot, so maybe this is the results of that. And I typically, when I get a flu shot, this is how I feel. This wouldn't be the time to forge ahead. So it was an opportunity to remind staff to err on the side of caution. And so if you're not feeling well, stay home and let's figure that out. And don't forge ahead. And so that was another opportunity that, a challenge that provided an opportunity to, to learn from. I, I think another challenge that we encountered was around improved cleaning. And so the events are, we have those scheduled to be cleaned quarterly and also are working to ensure that we have another layer of monitoring with regards to inspecting the cleaning that is happening in our buildings. And so currently the contractor that we are working with inspects the cleaning 10 times per month. And so we have requested And so we have requested to receive every report, anytime there's an inspection, but also to insert district staff into that process. That has not been the case previously. And so district staff will be a part of that inspection process two of those 10 times per month. And so, again, that was a solution that came out of challenges that were brought to bear last week. Any questions about successes, challenges and solutions?
Mr. Appleton?
Thank you, Dr. Felder. Just a couple of quick questions. On the screening during the buildings, do we currently have a question asked or currently waiting on results for COVID-19 tests?
I'm sorry, Mr. Appleton, can you repeat your question? I did not hear it. It's a little muffled.
Oh, it's a, I'm sorry. So do we currently have a question that's asked, are you currently waiting on the results of the COVID-19 test? I know under the, one of the presentations that we've been given, the questions that are shown is have you been, have you been diagnosed with COVID-19 since you were last at school? You know, are you experiencing the symptoms? And then have you been in close contact with someone? But do we have the other question that actually asks them, are you waiting on a result?
That is currently not one of the attestation questions.
Okay. I just pulled that from the CDC questions. When I was looking at it, looking at what we're doing, what we're doing. You know, I think, I think it would be a valuable question, just for sanity, right, to say that.
One thing I want to mention with that, Mr. Appleton, which I think that's an interesting point. And Smiley and I talked about it earlier and we also, one consideration, and I don't claim to have the answer for it, but if we start sweeping testing of our staff, even those who aren't symptomatic, we just need to be careful when that setting up a precedent where we're not letting people in who are awaiting a test, but it's just a, you know, a test to make sure we're catching things rather than people who are symptomatic.
Yeah, just if, if I can, yeah. Just quickly, yes. And the state guidance has a version of that question that says, are you awaiting like a doctor recommended COVID test or something like that? Which I think could be a good way to solve it. But I would, I would love for us to look at the state example form and our form and make sure that we're we're good on all the questions.
We can certainly do that and we'll do so in collaboration with the Orange County Health Department. So thank you for that recommendation.
Yeah, and the second question I had was on the mechanical systems. I know that vents are going to be cleaned and I know, and you know, one of the updates we got was there wasn't a plan to actually look at the coils or any other part of the system. But I think it would make sense that we spot check these, you know, look at the coils. Do they actually need to be cleaned? Because obviously, the vents get dirty because that's coming through that system. And if we're seeing that, I am not recommending, you know, what was, you know, showing that we should do this quarterly or whatever. I mean, I know at home, it's like recommended once every other year or something. But I think given the age of our systems and what we're dealing with, you know, spot checking one or two of these systems would at least give us some confidence in, are we just going to, you know, continuously have this problem and should we fix it? Or if the system's already targeted and needs replaced, then we know at least we have a, you know, an end to get a newer system in as well.
Sure, so I will certainly take that back to the operations team. I'm sure they're listening and we will discuss that.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, so if we don't have any other questions or comments at this time, we're going to move on to slide 42. And that would be, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Dr. Felder. Do you mind, I just had just a quick comment that first, how much I appreciate this level of transparency in helping us all understand what's going on in our schools. And I also like reading that there's a feedback loop happening, that that things are happening in our schools and it's changing the way the district communicates. So I think that it just helps me maybe put that move to the board. I was curious if you feel, how you feel about the feedback process that's happening around the facility, around facility problems, facility cleaning, mechanical issues. Because I hear, I'm hearing you that the feedback that you made some changes to the way you work with the exposures, but I'm just curious how it's working with facilities, if you feel that process is working.
Yeah, so thank you for that question. I think that, you know, it's a process that will, we will continue to seek to improve upon. I think we're making strides in the right direction. And we certainly are getting feedback and are acting upon the feedback that we we receive. And so we have some other plans in the works that we're not prepared to share tonight. But it's all based on feedback, it's all based on lessons learned. We've been very reflective. We have not let one shred of information that we receive go unacted upon, unreflected upon, again, in a spirit of continuous improvement. And so I'm very proud of the team and their efforts around reflecting on the challenges that we face and feedback that we receive and being solution oriented and trying to, how can we do this better? We're not working from a place of, well, that's how we've always done it. That's not the space that we're in. So we, you know, some of these situations, we didn't get there overnight and we're not going to be able to fix them overnight, but we are working towards continuous improvement.
Thank you, Dr. Felder. And sorry, board, it's, you know, I'm learning to manage to screen and be in the room. And I don't, normally, whenever they're in the same room, they can see the cues from other people and anyway, we'll, I'll get better, apologies.
Okay, any other questions before comments before we move on? All right, if not, we're going to go to the next slide and that's slide 41. And so this slide outlines some of the reporting and compliance strategies that we have in place. And so we have a district-wide voicemail tip line, hotline, take your pick, but we have one. And and this is, so there's an external phone number, an extension, and that hotline is checked a couple of times a day. So far, we've not received any information via the hotline tip line. We will continue to push that out, information out because we want the feedback and want to give staff and families and students a way to communicate concerns. We also have a reporting email, covid.hotline@orange.k12.nc.us. And that email box is again checked several times a day. We have a process that we use for forwarding any information that would come through those two means. And so, so that's another way reports and concerns can be shared. Another strategy we have is recall reporting a problem survey tool. And that one has been used. And so the way that that works, the form is an online form and it goes to the building administrator and myself and other district leaders get that information so that we can follow up on it. We are also have implemented daily walkthrough with a checklist. And that is happening by school administrators and or their designees and work site administrators and or their designees. And central office staff will be supporting schools in this effort effective this week. And so central office leaders have all been assigned to a school. And, you know, this is nonjudgmental or value valuerative. It is in an effort to support schools. And so all of the data from the school-based administrators walkthrough as well as the central office walkthroughs all dump into a large spreadsheet. And it will give us an opportunity to not only see what compliance is looking like at each school with regards to the end work site, with regards to the three Ws, but also allow us to step back and reflect and see what the data are showing us with regards at the district level, right? And so to look across the entire district. And so that has already started that work. Then, as Dr. Benjamin mentioned, something we've done already. And and since we've been bringing out, actually, it was our SLL is where we started looking at reviewing video footage from our buses. And certainly observed a student who had slipped his mask down and gave us an opportunity to follow up. So without that video footage and regular review of video footage, we would probably would not have been aware of that. So that's another strategy that we are using to support compliance. We also are working towards, how do we recognize schools and buses and work sites where there is that 99% or greater adherence to masking in particular? And so we are going to work with, across our stakeholder groups to come up with strategies to recognize that adherence. Want to certainly have carrots in there as well. And then what is also under development would be school and work site based safety teams. And so these may, this work may be folded into a team that's already in existence. And some of our schools and work sites may already have a safety team, but this would be a team that would look at, to serve as a body that would look at the data and and look for lessons learned, much as we're doing at a district level that are happening in their building and look to see where they need to make revisions. So one of the, again, successes from having staff come back is that it's given us an opportunity to actualize and operationalize our plans. Every school, every work site has a plan. And but this is the time when we're testing those plans out to see what needs to be revised, improved upon, what's working well before our students return. So again, these are some of the reporting and compliance strategies that are in place, active and moving forward in the district at this time. Any questions or comments about reporting compliance strategies?
Mr. Appleton?
Just one, Dr. Felder, on the daily walkthrough and with the checklist, I just wanted to hear this out loud. I assume that as they're doing the walkthrough, they're going to address the issues immediately unless it's a mechanical, have to call somebody, but they will say, hey, mask or, okay, I just wanted to make sure we're not versus, hey, we need to fix it immediately.
No, no, that that would not be the best use. We can kill two birds with one stone. So absolutely not. It is just as you described. Yep, if you say, see something, you've got to say something, absolutely. But also capture that, right? And it's not just capturing where there may be noncompliance, but also capturing where there is compliance. We want to learn from both of those scenarios. All right, any other questions or comments before we move on?
I just want to remind, you know, everyone, it's 9:30 and we do have two important policies that I really hope will be able to get through this evening. So I don't want to compromise this important conversation, but I do want to keep time in mind.
Yes, thank you for the time reminder, Mrs. McKenzie. So I've, we've already talked about slide 42 and that's the communications flow and how it's been revised. It's pretty self-explanatory. We've, and this again is based on lessons, lessons learned over the past two weeks. We've done mock scenarios with staff from Orange County Health Department. That helped to inform this as well as just incidents that we have dealt with over the past a couple of weeks and has led to this reporting structure. And so there's one thing I do want to highlight. One of the big lessons that we learned when we initially, again, on paper, it was one thing, but when we operationalized it, certainly something else with regards to that initial notification. And that was working by way of email. But we don't have special email boxes for this, for all the people you see there. And so it goes into our regular email. So as you can imagine, you know, most of us get tons of email a day. And so we could easily miss, we quickly, whoa, we could easily miss an email. And so I just want to laud and applaud Ryan Miller as he created the form now in a way that, yes, it still comes by way of email, but it also dings your phone. You literally get an alert on your phone that a form has been submitted, that there's a new notification and you can just from your phone tap it and the the form's content opens up and that starts this whole process to going. So it is been, that is working. But again, we would not have known that if we didn't have an opportunity to operationalize the plan. So this is the current flow chart. It may, you know, you may see another iteration of it as we continue to work through our safety plan. But this is where we are today. Any questions or comments about the flow chart before I punt very quickly to Ms. Stowe? And she's going to take us through the dashboard. So the current dashboard and the dashboard to come, once more of our students come back and then we will shift to Ms. Raff, who will take us through the budget items.
Ms. Howser? Yep, just in the Family Success Alliance meeting today, one of the zone navigators was mentioning that, was asking about how parents would be notified. And she said that many of her parents don't get emails and that a text message would be better. So I didn't know if we were planning that or, but this was just a feedback for you.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Howser, for that question. So, you know, as I stated earlier, we are working on implementing a text, a texting process. In fact, it is in pilot form and Ms. Stowe, I think, can speak more to that because she's leading that effort. So we recognize that, that actually the research says that families prefer text messages. So we have that capacity within our communications systems that we have. We just have not used it previously, but we are putting that text messaging messaging feature in place. Again, piloting it at one school to see where the kings are and then we'll be rolling it out to all schools. But with regard to the families, they don't get, so family staff, they have access to the form. And so they complete the form, it's online. They complete the form and that form gets, it is sent to the folks who are represented on this flow chart. But that's just one way. Families can also pick up the phone and call. And so staff can do the same. So you don't have to complete the form, but the form will get completed either by the person that is lodging the report or the person that they call. So we do have a backup to the form, realizing that, A, everyone may not have access to the internet. So that may not be the best way for them or a ready way for them to provide a report, make a report. So making a phone call is also, can also work, but a form will be completed based on a call.
Okay, I think we're ready to talk for the board.
Okay, well, at this point, we are going straight to the dashboard, Ms. Stowe. So if you would take us to slides 44 and 45, that would be great.
Okay, good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair. So I want to quickly go over the dashboard and just want to let you know it's, it's a lot bigger than just the dashboard. This dashboard requires a concerted team effort and that really begins with our school nurses, our principals and a district level team. As Dr. Felder just mentioned, when we get the form and we get an update, we are all available. And and that is because our goal extends beyond what North Carolina Department of Public Instruction requires. Public Instruction requires. They only require that we report clusters. But we believe in the spirit of transparency. Frankly, we believe in treating people like we want to be treated. And that goes two ways. So one way is if there's a case, a positive reported case, then we want to inform all students and all staff who are on-site. And the other way that goes is that we want to protect people. So if we have a student or staff member who is quarantined or who tests positive, we need to protect their identity. This tracking sheet is the public-facing dashboard. And the difference is that if you're a student or staff member at a school and there is a positive or site and there's a positive case, you will be notified that day. When we're notified, you are notified. This dashboard is for the public. So this is for anyone that wants to see how we're doing, how things are going. And as it's been mentioned multiple times, COVID is a community issue in, in most instances. And to date, it's coming into the school, it's not being spread in the school. So this dashboard was made live last week when we had all staff return. It was previously not up because we had less than 50 students on-site and we did not have all of our staff on-site. So the numbers were small and therefore we didn't want to potentially identify a student or staff if they were, reported a positive COVID case. This dashboard reports, and this will be through January 25th, we'll report on a weekly basis. It's updated by 5:00 PM every Friday, the number of new cases by grade level or work site, new clusters, and then the cumulative number of cases that have been reported since December 7th. And so that green column will just continue to add up. And that is an option we opted for instead of having a chart for every week and having any type of human error, which is easy to do when you're scrolling through. We're just going to keep up with that for folks. The next chart is the one that would be launched or will be launched January 25th. And so at this point, we'll have, as Dr. Dawson mentioned earlier, we'll have approx, well, it won't be 60% because we're alternating weeks and staggered starts, but we'll have students and staff back. And so we will, as recommended by the ABC Collaborative and in a spirit of transparency, begin reporting the number of cases weekly by students and staff by location, either work site or school. If you have any questions, happy to answer. Also happy to proceed to the next topic.
Ms. Miley?
Just one quick one. I'm wondering if you, I think this, it's great to see that we're transitioning to sites, first of all, when more kids are in buildings, because that had been a question of mine. The number of staff or students quarantined, did we consider putting that in here? I know that that's been a major issue in some other districts in terms of their ability to continue to function. So it seems important to me as a board member to have that information and I imagine might be of interest to the public.
We, we did talk about that. In fact, in one of our drafts and many communications, it was included. And in conversations with our school lead nurses and the health department, that the issue with the quarantine is just the capacity to manage that. And also is the quarantine because you were exposed by someone at school? Or is the quarantine because you were exposed by someone at home? And just the kind of gray area and just the ability for our nurses to manage that every day.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Sorry. And I should point out, I should have said this already, this dashboard only reflects in-person students. So if a student is fully remote, they do not need to report a COVID case. They can if they choose to for purposes of homework and working through that, but that would not be reflected. These are only cases that are coming through our schools and our sites.
This is very helpful. Thank you so much. Looks like we're ready for the next topic.
Okay, Ms. Rath, you're next.
Good evening, everyone. I guess if we could advance to the first slide that, I'm sorry, I can't see slide numbers.
46.
Ms. Bunch, I apologize. We get there, there we go. Thank you so much. This will be a familiar information to some of you and, well, I don't know if, hopefully not the first time that you've seen it for the rest of you, but we did share this information in our recent budget committee on December the 2nd. Next slide, please. At that meeting, we talked about a projection of where we think we're going to end up coming in this fiscal year in regards to our state and local funding sources. As these are the only revenue sources that we have flexibility in and are able to have a little bit more fluidity in. Our other ones are restricted, therefore they did not come into play when we were doing this projection. If you see, I'm not going to read this, but our projected surplus for this fiscal year right now is at $1,392,000. This is a change from the December 2nd Budget Committee meeting because between that time and tonight, there was an approval of a one-time additional $500 compensation that is now included in the December through June projected numbers, which has decreased our surplus for where we feel like we're going to come in for this year. I can't reiterate enough that this is a projection and to just understand that this can fluctuate and, and more than likely will fluctuate as a result of COVID and Plan B unknowns. Next slide, please. For our discussion tonight, the most important thing that we want to get input in and share with the board is these expenses that we know and have identified and would like to recommend for board approval for funding for us to be able to begin moving forward. To begin with, I hope to provide you an idea of the total surplus that we anticipate for the fiscal year 2021. As you can see there, our first line item is the surplus that we're anticipating from our budget. And if you add to that our fund balance that is available right now, that gives us a total of roughly $5 million of revenue that is available for spending. So in acknowledgement of the time, if I move too quickly or if you have questions, just please stop me, but I hope to be able to at least give you some information on each of these items that we have here for recommendations for this evening. The first one is the Edmentum Teacher of Record or the Orange County School Learning Coach for those self-paced students. Again, this is an estimate. This is a high estimate. You know, as we're looking at the data and getting more information, in all likelihood, it is going to be less than $300,000. But we did want to come in with the board with the absolute most impact that it could be to our budget. One of the other items that we have talked about is substitutes to support our at-risk staff. And these are staff who have been approved for ADA accommodations and therefore would be teaching remotely, but there would need to be someone available to be in the classrooms to supervise the students and assist. Based upon the ADA approvals that we have to this point and what we're anticipating, that's going to be an additional need of $325,000 to carry us through the end of this fiscal year. Another item that we would like to bring for recommendation and consideration is a stipend for our exceptional children's staff. This is to acknowledge those staff that returned to in-person on October the 25th, who returned before any other staff had to come into our buildings. And that's, and would be an additional stipend of $250 for all of those staff certified, as well as any support, which would, the recommendation would include teacher assistance, et cetera. Another area that has been identified is additional cleaning and sanitation. This is surrounding deep cleaning and sanitation of our non-school facilities in the district. For example, the, our central office buildings primarily. And again, this is, this is a high estimate, a worst-case scenario, in all likelihood, you know, our numbers as we begin finalizing these will be less than the $75,000. Another item that we've identified that we would like to recommend is two additional nurses that would specifically support our COVID flow chart that was just shared with you earlier, as well as contact tracing. These would be district personnel who would be primarily dedicated to that contact tracing and that flow chart that was shared with you earlier. Another item that we have for recommendation is a local leave option. You know, we have talked about a few times tonight that as we are returning to in-person instructional opportunities for our students, now than more than ever, we need our staff and we need all of our staff to support us. And safety continues to be our number one priority. And so therefore, we're asking any employees who don't feel well, even with very minor symptoms or what they perceive to be non-COVID-related, to consider staying at home and working remotely. Some of our staff, their job duties cannot be done remotely and this would include our bus drivers, our custodians, our maintenance workers, our supervised learning lab staff, and our child nutrition staff. Because we cannot provide legitimate work remotely for the, for this mentioned group of employees, they would have to take personal leave or sick leave. And unfortunately, many of these employees may not have those leave options available. There is federal leave that is available for employees who may be quarantined or maybe not be sick but not feeling well, but that leave is set to expire on December the 31st. And at this time, we have no indication if that's going to be extended past that time. So therefore, we have liked to present an option for a local leave. So for these employees who don't have any other options, to be able to consider staying at home when they're not feeling well. That leave there is based upon looking at the average salaries of the aforementioned staff that I mentioned, and 10 days of leave would equate to $231,000. Another item that we would like for approval is the small group stipends. This is for those individuals who are bringing in small groups and working with them. You know, in particular, our certified staff who are losing their planning time for their regular instruction to plan for these small groups. We would like to provide a small stipend to those for doing that. It's $30 a week for, the recommendation is $30 a week for a one-hour small group session and $60 a week for a two-hour small group session. An item that has been discussed in previous meetings is the air scrubbers for the band and chorus. That would actually be $19,000 as another, excuse me, one has been identified that we would like to go ahead and move forward with. We have talked about in previous meetings to our before-school and after-school programs and starting those up again as we start receiving our students back in. As a result of the, the change in our start times, our proposal is to offer before-school at each of our seven elementary schools with a capacity of 40, I believe is that number, free to first, the first individuals who sign up for that service. And that would equate to a cost to the district of $196,000 for that program through June 30th of 2021. In regards to after-school, we also propose that those after-school sites would open up at each of our seven elementary schools and that we would provide that service free to our Orange County school staff, our Every Student Succeeds Act identified staff, students, as well as our McKenty Vento students. To accommodate that, the maximum, maximum cost to the district as a result would be And the final item for presentation or consideration this evening is the on-site supervised learning labs and offering those to our Orange County school staff, our ESA, as well as McKenty Vento families, free of charge. To be able to fulfill that, that would equate to $300,000 through June the 30th of 2021. All of the items presented here give us a total of roughly $1.8 million in comparison to the surplus and fund balance that is available. That would still leave us a remaining surplus of $3.3 million. Before I move on, is there any questions? Before I round out our discussion and basically just share a few things that I want to make sure that you keep in mind as we continue to have our discussions surrounding these expenditures and also surrounding our unassigned fund balance.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rath.
Madam Chair, can I move to extend?
Thanks. That's what I was getting at. I have a motion to extend. Can we make that by 30 minutes?
Yes, that's what I said.
Okay, perfect. We have a motion from Ms. Stevens and a second from Mr. Atherton and Ms. Doyle.
Yes.
Ms. Howser.
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Miley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
We are in session until 10:30. Thank you to our reliable Madam Vice Chair and Ms. Doyle. I will recognize you for your question.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rath. I just have a quick question. My recollection from the budget committee meeting, and I just want to clarify my own note, does the EC staff, like, do they pay teachers who also returned at that time?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. Thank you for asking that, Ms. Doyle. I think that was on probably more than one of our lists in our curriculum. Mr. Atherton?
Yes, that was one of my questions as well. If we can maybe a definition, doesn't have to be right now, of what deep cleaning entails. I know we hear it a lot. I get a lot of questions about what is different, what we do differently. So we could just send that out, put it in our F and P as well. The, on the local leave option, are we going to require staff to go get tested in that? Or, you know, what is the, you know, boundaries on that? If you don't feel well, we'd like to ask you to go tested in that time or we just ask you to stay at home? Just so we know how that's going to be.
Mr. Atherton, I think those are great questions and I do believe that there would need to be a small committee or a small group of people, you know, myself included and HR and, you know, I- and HR, and, you know, I imagine maybe a principal and some school-level people for actually to talk about and establish some rules regarding that. And also, you know, I would think that we might need some legal input in regards to what we can and cannot require.
All right, and the last question I had is the, the learning labs, the before-school, after-school, how do those all relate in terms of student population and staff? Are there overlaps of these? You know, I imagine not, because we already have some work labs, but are there cases where students will be mixed in the learning lab, that only written before-school, or is that still going to work?
I'm not sure that I can answer that question right now. I think, you know, a lot of that is still being looked at and worked out in regards to the cohorts, in regards to who is going to be and when. Are you asking, let me make sure I understand exactly your question, as I was struggling to hear a little bit. Are you asking if the, if there's going to be any mixing of the groups, or if it's going to stay consistent?
Right, I'm, I'm just curious, because we've got three different programs, and for example, the, the learning labs, you know, somebody's in there all day, you know, student-wise or staff-wise, but you have the morning program where there's a smaller group where that's not, that capacity's not given all day. And then you have the after-school, that's another group. I'm just curious if there's plans that, A, they're in the mornings, there's going to be the learning labs, and then before-school in that same setting, or is it going to be both, they're going to be physically different? You know, just, just trying to understand. I don't, I don't need an answer right now, I'm just curious, because these are kind of three different programs in the same school that are, one's it all day, one's, you know, two are at different times. I didn't know if it helped through how that would look.
Oh, if, if you don't mind, Ms. Rath, I could address that. So, yes, Mr. Atherton, we're actually looking at the flip model. So it's going to be leveraging the staff that operate the before and after-school and supervised learning labs, so that the students aren't having to travel between sites. And we are working closely with the principals at the elementary levels, and looking at the data Dr. Dawson referred to earlier, so that we're alternating weeks, and we're doing so with groups knowing who needs before and after-school. So yes, we are looking at that, but it's more of the flip, that we want to keep families and students in their one location convenient, and our staff are going to be the ones that rotate and cover those.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stowe.
All right, I, thank you for this. This is really great, helped to see this list. I have a question about substitutes to support remote at-risk staff, and I wondered if it's, and it's not for this report, but maybe for future, or a, a future soon meeting, and that's, can we, can we use substitutes, and maybe in a different way, to support at-risk students? And, and what I'm really asking is do our schools, with all these new responsibilities that we impose on them for COVID and safety, and, and now bringing students back and teaching in-class and teaching remote at the same time, do they need more help in the schools? And might that be in the form of substitutes? And I know, Ms. Rath, because you have taught me that we cannot use our, our fund balance for recurring expense. So I thought sub, using substitutes would be a way around that. But I just wanted to, do our schools need more staff to operate safely as they bring their students back? Good question. I have to answer.
Okay, thank you. I was going to say, I'll, I won't step out of my lane here, but I will definitely think that is something that we can discuss as, as a team to determine the best utilization of those staff. You know, the, the intent here were to make sure that our schools had super, adults that could be in the classrooms with our in-person students, for those teaching staff that have, have been identified and approved for ADA accommodations that would prevent them from actually returning, where they would actually be instructing remotely to students who would be in-person in the classroom.
And I probably confused this a little, I just really asked, we would need to add more staff to our schools to help them manage all the safety compliance issues, as well as teaching in a hybrid environment. So it's just really, it's a broader question, and, and will you substitute? So it would be a new line item, it's not here, and so maybe you could consider that.
Ms. Smiley?
Thanks, I have questions about three of these. The, the Edmentum Teacher Record or OCS Learning Coach, I understand that this is high, your high estimate, but I am concerned about how expensive it is. And I'm, I'm wondering, did we think about just no longer offering this option of like self-paced learning, knowing that this, I think, is a lot more expensive than we'd originally been thinking when offering that? So I'm curious about whether we've just considered saying, you know what, this is actually not the best option to be offering. My question about the EC and pre-K staff stipend, I mean, we're not doing enough to thank anyone in this system for everything everyone's doing, but I guess I'm curious, I know that there are a lot of staff members who've been working since March, right, delivering meals and things like that. And so providing a stipend for this group specifically, but not that group, is there, is there something we've already done for that group? Or what's the, if you could speak a little bit, somebody could speak a little bit more to the unique, you know, case here, I think, for an additional stipend? Because I know we've given the $500 stipend to everyone. I just, yeah.
Yeah, that's a great question, and I'll use the opportunity, if I may, just to, to, to bring back up and talk about in March, for those staff members who were not able to work remotely, and who did have to report to our locations, we did provide hazardous pay to them for that time period. I think it was March through May, June, May timeframe, where we actually provided hazardous pay to those individuals.
Thank you, Ms. Rath, for that reminder.
Yes.
I do remember that now, okay. And then my last one is the before-school, and having 40 slots at each school, my understanding was that early on, we thought that we would be fine with that number of slots, but I have sort of an equity concern around, you know, the, there's 40 slots, and the first 40 to sign up get the slots. And if there is actually a need for even more, I have an equity concern, because when we just do it, when we do surveys and things, our white families tend to be more, tend to respond at a higher rate. And so might the, making this sort of first-come, first-served, instead of it's, if we have enough slots for it to be free for everyone, great, but if we don't have enough slots for it to be free for everyone, let's make it free for our lower-income families, or something like that. Yeah, I just, I, I wanted to flag that, it's a, it's a concern I have, if it turns out we do have interest then from more than 40, for more than 40 students.
I'll chime in, and so we put that caveat in there, because we had no idea, and it really wasn't, it's not our capacity issue, it's the space, and knowing to be safe, and I appreciate your comment, because that's certainly well-intended, and, and is the spirit of which we do our work. At this point, based on the feedback, we don't have, we only have one site that's right over 40, and then after-school, we have sites go up to 67. Our plans are to serve everybody. We were just concerned if we had 100 and 200, we'd have to, we would have to figure out a scale. And I do appreciate your comment, though, about who is it free for, and we will, we will keep that in mind. That's a really great piece of feedback, thank you.
Thanks.
And Ms. Smiley, if I may just provide some context around the self-paced and the cost. So as Ms. Rath said, we, you know, initially, not knowing the numbers, and, and look, just kind of initially looking at what numbers we have, we did err on the high end. But what we're finding now, as school teams are actually following up with the students, and, you know, especially for like our secondary, high school students, taking a look at, you know, who selects self-paced, what is, what are the courses that they need to meet their graduation requirements, and having that type of dialogue, what we're finding is that, and I'll speak for one high school in particular, that I had a conversation with the principal, they actually are looking to provide instruction with the teachers that they have. It's because the kids, what they're needing is a mixture of classes with their teachers at school, and then the online courses that they need, they actually can get through NCVPS, which we already have funds already allotted for and all of that, and they already have their own teacher. So we wouldn't need to identify another Teacher Record through Edmentum or a learning coach. So what we're finding is that, you know what, our numbers probably won't be that high. And so, you know, the school teams are working through that as quickly as they can, and we will have a much more, you know, exact number versus an estimated number. So we're not, it's not going, it's starting to look much better, because what I think would be difficult is for families that really need this option to take it away from them. But because this is also an option that needs principal approval, school teams are connecting with each of those families, making sure it's the right fit, and in doing so, they're finding that, you know what, for some, it's, it's not. And then for some, what's also happening is, within the school team, there are teachers at the school that know these families, know the children, and they're also figuring out, you know what, I want to be that learning coach teacher that wants to keep working with the student, but because it will be above and beyond their normal student, you know, caseload of who they're be teaching in school and remotely, that that's where the stipend would come in. So we do hope that this will be a much lower number, and a much more utilization of our own OCS teachers as learning coaches.
Dr. Dawson, that was really helpful. Thank you very much for sharing that, and I'm glad that we're going to be using things like the virtual public school as well. For this one, I'm wondering, is this going to come back as a, as a contract for board approval for the actual amount that we will be paying Edmentum for teachers of record? Or how will this work?
Well, I, I'm going to leave the money contract side to Ms. Rath, but as far as, you know, once we have the actual numbers, we will definitely be working with Ms. Rath on, here's exactly what we need, and, you know, what that cost is looking like, and I would think that that would come back to the board before we proceed.
I imagine both Dr. Felder and I would have to sign it, and at that point, I could definitely share the contract with the full board. Will you have a policy about which contracts need to come to the board, and it will depend on how, the amount? Okay.
Sorry, what was that? I didn't hear that.
And I'm sorry, I was trying to pull up your policy, but you have a threshold above which any contract would have to come to the board. Is it 100?
I wanted to say.
I think it's 50, I think it's, service contracts are 50,000, that the superintendent has the authority to sign without board approval. So anything over $50,000 for a service contract does require board approval.
Very good. Are there any other thoughts, or I will entertain a motion? Yeah. Okay, I have a motion from Ms. Howser. I have a second from Ms. Doyle. Ms. Moore?
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Just to clarify, the motion is to approve spending these amounts contingent upon whatever requirements need to be met for the overall purpose. Yeah, perfect, thanks for the clarity, thanks for the line. Okay, Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Howser?
Yes.
I vote yes. These items are unanimously true. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Rath.
If I can just take a moment for the next slide, I just want to make sure that we keep in mind what we, challenges we may face in the upcoming budget cycle. Again, the loss of funding due to our decrease in our average daily membership, we received a waiver this year for that. A waiver for next year is very unlikely. If we hold where we are right now, we could lose up to $2.3 million in state and local funds as a result of that. Keep in mind, if there is a need to establish a separate virtual school, that would result in ADM reductions at every school, principal pay is based upon ADM, and so I know it would be the desire for us to hold, to keep our principals whole, and as a result, that would mean that we would need to look for funds in other places in order to, to be able to do that. A big concern, I guess, in light of all the COVID cases that we're continuing to see, is if the state were happened to shut down again, where we could see more loss of tax revenues, which we've already seen decline significantly up until the time that we were closed from March to the mid-May timeframe. We really aren't going to see the impacts of that until our next fiscal year. And just another thing to keep in mind and to keep out there is our child nutrition program, and if we can, if we aren't able to continue to serve our meals in the community at the level that we are now, when we begin utilizing buses and staff to actually start transporting students, that that could have an impact on that program, and there may be local funds that will be needed to keep that program operating in the black. Of course, as more information becomes aware to me, I will definitely keep you apprised in our board weekly updates, but I just want to keep these out there as things for us to continue to keep thinking about as we begin moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rath. Ms. Smiley and then Ms. Howser?
I didn't have anything. Thank you, Ms. Rath.
We're raising your hand. Ms. Howser?
Thanks for this. I, I just wanted to wonder, Ms. Rath, if you might do some checking for us, because what I am hearing is that the county sales taxes are coming in higher than expected, and I also, it was just on the noon over the weekend, that the state is sitting on a $5 billion fund balance that they didn't expect, and they're coming back in January to talk about distributing it. I don't know if it's COVID money, or some of it's COVID money, and some of it is higher than they expected fund down. So I have no idea what any of that means, but I just, but I've said that, and there's a great deal of need that has to be addressed, but I'm just curious if there's any discussion about some of those funds coming toward schools.
All right, look for updates in your board weekly updates. We will keep apprised of that, and I will keep you informed.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rath. Dr. Felder, is there anything else before we move to dinner support guidelines?
No, ma'am, we will stop here, and we'll save it for next, for board weekly update.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Absolutely. So the next item on our agenda is for, to discuss gender support guidelines for Orange County schools. It would be difficult for me to put into words how dear this is to my heart and how thrilled I am that this policy is before us for discussion tonight. There is little I could say that would be more impactful than Paul Nohagary's testimony during public comment this evening. I really believe that supporting our transgender, non-binary and gender nonconforming students is life-saving work. And I hope that people unanimously approve this policy, and I anticipate we will tonight. And I just thank you all for your collaboration, your hard work, your willingness to review these things over and over again, when your policy chair was plugging you with emails. What I think, Craig White from the Campaign for Southern Equality, Rebby Kern from Equality North Carolina, our equity teams at our high schools, and I believe actually maybe all of our schools, who gave us broad stakeholder feedback locally about this policy. This policy originated in New York City schools with extremely broad stakeholder feedback. It has been implemented in Bunton County schools and started at Mecklenburg schools and been really successful there. But we've taken it a step further and tailored it for our region, Orange County schools, and gotten feedback from our stakeholders here. And so I am, again, just really excited we are responding to this evening. And thank you to Dr. Keeling for helping us paint Elza. I'm sorry, I left you out of that list. There are so many people who have been working on this. And Dr. Felder, I'm not sure if a staff member was going to specifically walk us through this or whether we just want to open it up for work.
So the plan was to just open it up for a discussion, but we are happy to walk through if the board, so please is the board.
I think that we're good. I just wanted to double check that I wasn't overstepping, expecting to give comments this evening.
Not at all, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Miley?
I just want to say that I am thrilled that we've gotten to this point, looking forward to voting for this. And want to thank everyone who participated in really thoughtful, like nuanced, digging into the bits of the language to make sure that it is the most up-to-date terminology and things like that. And to you, Ms. McKenzie, you've been the driving force behind making sure that this happens and did lots of outreach to, to those external experts to make sure that we get it right. And I'm sure it'll continue to evolve as we continue to get it right-er. But just wanted to thank you and acknowledge you for that.
Well, I certainly should acknowledge you and Ms. Stevens and everyone who participated in the policy committee and all the board members. I think this has been a huge collaboration and this feels like a very celebratory moment for our district. Anyone else? Mr. Atherton?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, I'm glad to see us talking about this. I've had actually students reach out to me and also staff. Excited to see we are taking all of our different communities and making sure they're protected in our schools. And I'm glad that everyone's here to talk about tonight and with our district and the SL.
Just add that, I think it's a beautiful picture. I think it was really, I want to say delightful. It was really, you know, just something that you read this and you go, oh, this is really good. So thank you for that. And I like, you know, I talked about this earlier, but I like that it puts transgender and cisgender students at the same core, you know.
I want to put, this is a party I am very excited about having this policy and everyone supported this. And I think the timing is important as this has been such a mentally and emotionally stressful year for students, particularly for LGBTQ students, particularly for LGBTQ students of color. And so I think having this policy in place, we have to be prepared to go back to the school and district. It's naming those, it's definitely intersectional work and know that our friends, the transgender people of color are, we should be totally closed in this work. I wanted to ask the board if the board would consider waiving second reading to this policy so that it can be moved into policy tonight.
I would support that.
Well, I will take a motion and we'll, you have a motion?
I'll move to approve the gender support policy and waive second reading.
Second.
I have a motion for Ms. Miley and a second for Ms. Stevens to approve the policy with a waiver of second reading. Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Howser?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Miley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Motion unanimously passed and this is official Orange County school policy. May it be known and heard around and through this district that if you do not honor and respect the dignity of every student in our district, this is not a school for you to be. And with that, I will move on to the next policy, which I am also very excited about, which is our lactation support policy. And I have a feeling that Ms. Cunningham Brown would like to say a few words about this. So I'm going to open the floor to her first.
Well, perhaps you need to go on, Madam Chair, because...
Oh, we have five minutes. So.
Right.
Hello? I think she's here. I think she's here. I think she just got promoted to participant.
Ms. Cunningham Brown?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I've been unmuted. It brings me great pleasure this evening to bring to the board for consideration a lactation support policy. I'm excited about this policy. I think both policies tonight really demonstrate the district's commitment. And this particular policy provides a general outline of the minimum level of support to be provided to our parents and students who are nursing. We're excited to start the implementation of this policy. We've already started working with our principals. And so I know there may be some comments with regards to the policy, but again, I'm excited to bring this policy to you. I know Chair McKenzie has been very instrumental in supporting this policy, the adoption and creation of this policy, along with members of our policy committee and board. So again, I'm excited about bringing this policy to our parents and to our students. And I'll pause to see if there are any additional questions or comments.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cunningham Brown. And your work on this policy has been instrumental also. And I honor all of the hard work you've done and I could feel your excitement when you brought this to the policy committee and I am grateful for that. And I know that there will be lots of nursing parents and students in our district who benefit from your hard work. So thank you. The board, are there any comments or questions? We are running up on the end of our meeting, so I don't want to rush through this. But Mr. Atherton?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Atherton and a second for Ms. Howser. Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Miley?
Yes. And I'm wondering if we can waive second reading on this one also, so that it can go into effect after the break. Is that too late to change the?
Ms. Robinson, would you be willing?
I would accept the amendment.
Okay. Well, accept the amendment in the second, okay? And Ms. Stevens, will you?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you so much. Ms. Miley?
Yes.
Yes, and thank you for the amendment. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Howser?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Thank you so much, everyone, for your hard work on this policy. I know that our nursing parents and students and community members will really benefit from this and it makes my mama heart proud. And also, you know, I, I remember talking on the phone to one of my friends, who was a teacher in this district, long ago, when she would pump into a car. And that was years and years ago, but I just hope that no one who, who's, you know, anyone who doesn't want to do that in their car, I hope they now have, I know that they will have a clean, great, safe space inside our buildings. And I'm so happy about that. So thank you to everyone. Thank you, Dr. Felder, for your support of both of these policies tonight. And I think with that, unless Dr. Felder has more or the board has more, I will take a motion to adjourn. Do you have anything, Dr. Felder?
I do not. Thank you, Mrs. McKenzie.
Great. Mr. Atherton?
Do we need to have another review of that?
No, I was informed that we can do it first, so I don't have to.
You should go adjourned.
Second.
Okay. A motion, second for Ms. Stevens. Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Yes. I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Miley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Happy New Year, everyone. We're almost there.
So I have to tell you, in my little frame.